Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, December 9, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals, held at Ashland Town Hall on the second floor in the Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue.
All right, that should be clear.
All right, to continue?
Yep.
Okay. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. The posted agenda contains a link to the meeting on Zoom and also a telephone number which you can call in on and access the audio. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order. Aye, John to Fetham and present.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, present.
Brian, I think you're muted.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, in present on Zoom.
Not muted, but we're not hearing anybody.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, in present.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, in present on Zoom.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, in present on Zoom.
Yeah.
Did that work?
I'm getting you on clear, Brian.
I can hear you as well, Ryan. And I heard Stu, and I can hear John.
Unfortunately, we're not hearing you, Brian. We're not hearing you, Ryan. And we're not hearing you, Stu. Which is going to... That may explain...
Test, test, test it. Okay, we're good.
Good evening. And as we were so rudely interrupted, let's try this again with the call the meeting to order. Aye, John to Fetham and present.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, in present on Zoom.
Aye, Ryan, present on Zoom.
Stu, are you there? He's waving. Can you, can we hear you? I think you may be muted. I see a little red sign in the lower left-hand corner, Stu.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, in present on Zoom.
Excellent. We're all present and accounted for. Item number two on the agenda is a continuance of a public hearing involving 55 West Union Street and a 40B comprehensive permit request. This matter, the hearing was opened in August 26, 2025, and we met several times, most recently November 25, 2025, and when the matter was continued until this evening. We do have the applicant's representative present this evening. So, Ms. Sweeney, if you don't mind coming up to... Sweet, excuse me. Eventually, I will get the name right. I apologize. And introduce yourself once again for the record, and we can talk about what we may be able to accomplish this evening.
Her mic's not on.
Should I go again?
Do it again, I think, yes, unfortunately.
Good evening. Lynn Sweet, LDS Consulting Group, Wellesley, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, John Dudley. I see that we have some team members online as well. Or we did? Daniel was on from Van Ness. Is he still there? Daniel is the Vita. There he is. He's small. And the client as well as online, John Dudley.
Okay, very good. Originally, I thought tonight we would be talking about transportation because we had received our peer review report. And you had commented upon that, and we were waiting for a further reply from our peer reviewer, who I believe is present. I saw his name up there earlier before we had our malfunction there. Oh, waving, that's good. But it appears as though that with respect to the traffic issues, according to our peer reviewer, they have been, they have been resolved, and we are in agreement. So perhaps if I could ask our peer reviewer to identify himself and just fill the board in on where we stand on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. My name is Stephen Finland. I'm with the firm Howard Stein Hudson. We are approximately 120-person transportation engineering firm with offices located, four offices located in Massachusetts. So, and I run our Bridgewater office. So I can just talk quickly about what our role was as part of this process. So we were brought on to do a peer review of the submitted materials by the applicant, which included site plans as well as the traffic study. And as part of that review, we've been going back and forth with the applicant and their team on our review. So we initially submitted a letter to the board. I think it was November 13. And at that time, we identified what we called issues or concerns that we had that we were looking for additional information for the applicant. And, you know, as part of our review, we looked at a variety of things, you know, in terms of the study area, safety, you know, impacts, traffic study, analysis, things like that. So we looked at, you know, a lot of that stuff, and we came up with those 10 issues. So we got responses back on that letter, our November 13 letter back from the applicant. I believe it was November 24, right before Thanksgiving. We reviewed those, and then we submitted a follow-up letter to the board on December 4. So at that time, out of the 10 issues that we identified, eight of those had been resolved, and there were still two outstanding issues associated with our review. And then on December 5, we got responses back from the applicant on those two issues. And then we submitted a letter earlier today basically saying that those two issues have been resolved. So in summary, the 10 issues were resolved. And, Mr. Chair, if you want, I can go through the issues if you want. I'm sure you've read them, but it's up to you if you want me to go through them.
I think that would be helpful for not only board members, but also for the public just to be aware of what, what those issues were and how they've been resolved.
Okay. So I'll quickly go through these. So the first issue we identified had to do with the parking demand associated with the project. So they were using a parking ratio of 1.58 spaces per unit, and then comparing that to the ITE 1.23. So we were just looking for some additional clarification on that and how that was done, and how that kind of compared to the town requirements. So that was done, and we were satisfied. And really, what the issue was had to do with the visitor parkings that were identified. There was 19 visitor spaces that were identified. So we just wanted to clarify that that was sort of included as part of the overall count. So like I said, additional information was submitted, and we were happy with that. The next had to do with onsite parking. We had looked at the number of parking spaces that were being proposed overall. It appears that the applicant is applying for a waiver for the number of spaces. So that's really back to the board if they want to grant that waiver. The third one had to do with the parking space dimensions. I believe the town requires nine feet by 20 feet for standard parking spaces. They're providing nine by 18. So subsequently, they'll also be applying for a waiver for that as well, for those nine by 18s. The fourth issue had to do with loading and trash operations. So when we looked at the first site plan, we were a little concerned about how these type of vehicles would be accessing the site. The applicant went back, and they ran some auto turn analysis. They provided those to us. We reviewed those, and we had one additional question. That was one of the remaining issues that we had as part of the last two. Basically, how they would kind of... There was an issue where some of the spaces would be going. So they did clarify that, you know, if they were going to be using the pickup drop-off area. So that was clarified. So that issue was resolved. The fifth issue had to do with fire trucks and how they're accessing the site. We had a question about, there was a 14-foot clearance area that we asked them to make sure there wasn't going to be any issue with that, with some overhead clearances. So that was done. We asked the issue about snow storage and how that was going to be handled in a case with the heavy snow. And they did provide a snow removal process that was explained through their correspondence, how they're going to handle that. So that was done, and we were satisfied with that. The seventh issue had to do with, they were proposing a short sidewalk on the west side of the driveway. We looked at that. We had some concerns about pedestrians and how those would be crossing. So based on that comment, they actually relocated the sidewalk to the east side of the driveway to eliminate some of our concerns. So that was good that they were listening, and they changed that to address that concern. Eighth issue had to do with the indoor parking, I'm sorry, bike parking. You know, any type of project, we want to make sure that all, you know, not only vehicles, but pedestrians and bicyclists are addressed. So we asked them to identify how parking was going to be handled for bikes. So there is an area that's going to be provided in the, in the building. So that was something that was provided. We were happy with. The ninth issue had to do with sign and pavement markings. The original site plan had some call-outs and things about pavement markings and signage. So we thought it would be better or clearer for anyone looking at it to develop a, what we call a sign and pavement marking plan. So they did do that. They provided subsequent information for that plan, which we had asked for and was sufficient. There was, that was another one of the final two issues that we had. We asked for additional signage for the pickup/dropoff area just to make it clear. And there was no issues with operations and how that was going to happen. So they did clarify that. And in the site, the pavement marking and signage plan was revised, which we received earlier. And then the last thing had to do with construction plan operations during construction. We asked them to just provide, you know, what the plan was going to be during construction. So they did provide a full construction management plan as part of their submission. So we reviewed that, and it seemed adequate. So in summary, Mr. Chair, like I said, those are the 10 issues. We got through them all, and the applicant was very responsive to our requests and happy to be here tonight saying all the issues have been resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just respond to one thing?
I'm sorry?
May I just respond to one thing? Because there is one file...
I'm sure I was going to ask my fellow board members if they had any questions for him, and then give you an opportunity to add. But if you want to add it now, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you. I'm so sorry. There is one thing that we do need to follow up on, and we are really appreciative of the review and the feedback. We do owe you, in our next round of site plans, those pavement markings and signs. We put them in an email, but they do need to go on the plan, and we assume there's going to be another round of plans.
Yeah, I believe you had mentioned that in the email, and we do appreciate pointing out that we need to look forward to that when the new site plans come in.
Thank you.
Okay. Fellow board members, any questions for our peer reviewer, Mr. Finland?
I don't have it. Excuse me, I don't have any.
None on my end either.
And Brian?
None here, Mr. Chairman.
I have none either. Mr. Finland, thank you very much for your work on this. And I'm glad things were worked out to your satisfaction. And we thank the applicant and the applicant's traffic consultant on that as well for getting us to one issue seemingly closed. Anything else you wanted to add on this, Ms. Sweet, before we went on to the next?
No, thank you.
Okay. I know we had a peer review for, from Haley and Ward from, for water and sewer issues. I know they issued a comment letter dated December 2, 2025. And I don't believe there's been a response yet from the applicant. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, we just received the comment letter, I believe, yesterday.
Oh, okay.
And we do, we would like to talk about that and how we're trying to address it. We think it's really important to have board input at this time with regard to the comments. And I know that, I believe that the peer reviewer is online. So there were four items that were noted in the peer review. And just kind of run through those real quickly.
Well, Ms. Ordung is online, I believe. And why don't we invite her to join the meeting and perhaps summarize her report in the four items? And if we can accomplish anything further as far as answering any questions you might have, that would be, that would be terrific. Good evening, Bethany. Good to see you once again.
Hi, good to see you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Bethany Ordung from Haley Ward.
Thank you. Would you mind perhaps summarizing the report? We have a report of December 2, 2025, consisting of two, four, looks like six pages with four recommendations at the, at the end. So why don't you sort of summarize for us, if you can, the report and what your opinion is?
Sure. So we were reviewing the design for water and sewer capacity townwide. So what that means is we look at the permitted limits and the actual pump station capacity for the drinking water and the sewer system. And we looked at the water use projections and the sewer flow projections. We used two different approaches to estimate those numbers. We used a DEP per capita number, and we also used a standard per bedroom number. So we kind of looked at it from a couple of different angles, and then we look at what's your average flow, and then what's your peak flow. So based on all of that, it appears that there is capacity in the system in terms of permitted capacity and what the pump stations can actually pump. We did not specifically investigate the gravity system capacity. So that is what one of the comments is about. We have asked the applicant to do a brief metering flow study just to confirm that there is actual capacity in those gravity mains that are downstream of the site. So that is one of the wastewater comments. I have three wastewater comments and one water comment. So that's one of the wastewater comments. The second wastewater comment, we have asked that the applicant provides a CCTV inspection of those sewer pipes. And again, that is sort of hand-in-hand with the flow study. So the flow study will measure the flows and take a look at whether or not there's any rainwater entering the system that could affect the capacity. The CCTV inspection actually sends a camera into the pipes and looks at, you know, are there any blockages? Are there any serious issues with these pipes that are going to hinder its ability to carry this additional flow? And the third wastewater comment that I have is really the root of that sewer main that is going through a proposed easement in the proposed parking area. So right now, the sewer is in an easement through that parcel. The applicant is proposing to move that sewer and sort of reroute that easement. And it's going to be through the proposed parking area. There are a lot of sharp turns in the proposed easement. And there's also, the manholes are quite deep, over 28 feet. And in some places, they actually come within 30 feet of the building. So that definitely presents some challenges in terms of being able to get equipment in the parking lot, being able to maneuver around parked cars or other obstacles with large trucks, like the vacuum truck, which is something that they use for maintenance. And also, if there's any kind of maintenance or repair that needs to happen, that's a very deep trench to be digging within 30 feet of a building. So my recommendation was that they look at moving it back into the street on Memorial Drive. I know that there were some issues with ledge in that area in the past, in past developments. But I really think that that is a better way to go than rooting it through, like zigging and zagging through the proposed parking area. So those are the three sewer comments. My one water comment sort of ties into something that the town engineer had commented on in a preliminary version of this plan. And that is, the current proposal has a single water service to the building. And we would like to see a looped water main going around the building with fire hydrant access at the rear of the building just so that there's more locations for water access if there is a fire. And that's the summary of my four comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Ms. Ordung at this point?
Yes. When you say you looked at the permitted use of what's going on, does that include all the stuff that's in the pipeline and how that affects the water and sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So when we look at the town capacity, we've looked at the data from the pump stations, how much is being pumped each year to serve the current population. We also took into account the other, I believe there's one, maybe two other, there's one other development upstream of this that was recently approved. I think it's the Arbella development. And we also took into account the other developments that are sort of in the process throughout town.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions from me.
Okay, fine, thank you. I have no questions at this time. Ms. Sweet?
Good evening again. Unfortunately, we only learned in the middle of the day that this topic was going to be covered this evening. So I don't have the benefit of our consultant, Phil Codero, here, or the potential company that's going to do the testing. But I am going to try and speak to a couple of things, and we may need to revisit this when people are here that are a little bit more versed in the topic. The easy one is that we agreed previously to loop the water main. So that is, is in our minds, non-issue. I did speak with Phil on the drive out here. He was headed to a hearing in Bauxford at 6:30. So unfortunately, can't be at two places. He said that the reason the sewer was put where it was on-site was when they were rebuilding and redesigning Memorial Drive. The conditions were such that it did not make any sense to put the sewer in Memorial Drive. And he can certainly come back at a later meeting and speak to why that is not a good idea and why what we are proposing is, makes sense. The other thing is that we are in a 40B hearing, and I do want to, again, our lawyer's not here tonight, but I just want to mention that the cost to relocate the sewer line into Memorial Drive would most likely make the project an economic. I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but we have significant concerns from an economic and a practical impact. And certainly, Phil was part of the team that, that worked on and redesigned Memorial Drive. With regard to the testing, again, I've had conversations with Phil. I've had conversations with my client. I've had conversations with someone that wants to do some testing. Bethany was gracious enough to answer some questions that I had with regard to some specifics. And at the end of the day, we have concerns about the scope and what we feel is the overreaching of the scope and putting this cost and time burden on the developer. The developer has budgeted over $400,000 in water and sewer connection fees. Those are fees that go directly to the town to look at, fix, and study these kinds of items. And it feels like you're asking my client to do the town's work on this. The length of pipe that you're looking for us to inspect is 4,000 feet. And you're asking us to look at, it looks like, five or six manholes that go a very, very, very long way. You're asking us to look at an equivalent of one year or six-hour storm or heavier. For a project that is 116 units, a project that's going to be using the same sewer line that the Y is getting permitted for, we have concerns about having this type of a burden put on the project at this point in time. And even, you know, we are, we're not, we're looking at costs of $20,000 to $30,000 to do this testing and many months of testing. We have about two months left in our 180-day period here. So, you know, with all that being said, the developer would consider doing it, but, but they would only do that if there was going to be some relief on the connection fees that are being, you know, asked of them. We truly feel that somebody, you know, your peer review consultant, the town's experts, like Bethany, that know this system, are much better off, you know, looking at these kinds of items on behalf of the town. They're much more familiar with the systems than for us to hire a third party to go out and do that work.
Well, first of all, it's my understanding the water and sewer connection fees are not designed to be used... Have you suggested the town use them to do that work? I understand your position. I would suggest that we would resume this discussion at a time when your engineer can be present because I understand the shortness of the time notice and what have you. But I'm not sure we're going to agree on what those fees are going to be used for or certainly whether a reduction in those fees would be warranted, but that can be a discussion for another day.
Understood.
Okay. Any other comments from our members? Bethany, any response at all? Sort of a board issue at this point, I think, perhaps?
No, no response, other than I do support your comments on the intent of those connection fees is not for maintenance, you know, just for this new project.
Okay. And to be clear, I think as far as the board is concerned, you know, we would encourage or welcome any communication directly between Ms. Ordung, you, your engineer and whatnot to try and facilitate agreement where possible or narrow issues and what have you. So I was glad to hear that you had reached out before. I know Ms. Ordung is always available to talk outside of the scope of a meeting to make progress on things and we appreciate that. If there's nothing else on that issue, why don't we move on to one final issue? And Ms. Ordung, I think we're done with your area if you want to leave the meeting, but you're also welcome to stay and listen and participate if you'd like.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick comment, John, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry?
I have a comment if you don't mind.
Sure, I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah, I place a lot of stock in what Ms. Ordung's said about where the sewer lines are located and how difficult it'll be to zigzag them through the parking lot and the ultimate concerns of 28-foot-deep service holes. And while it probably was a good idea when there was no building there to run the sewer line through that area, I fully agree that putting it into the road at this time makes much more sense than trying to zigzag through a parking lot where a new building is proposed to be built. I'm not sure whose responsibility it is to budget for and understand that, but it really sounds like our peer reviewers are on the right course with her concerns about it.
Okay, thank you for that.
I think we might want to have the civil engineers weigh in on that perhaps? Maybe the subject is going to, you know, the soils and the rock and why we can't put it in there. I think it's more of a global issue.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, that's fine. Moving on to a request that we had made, and I understand there's an objection on your part, to having a peer review for an architecture or design consultant. And I guess I don't quite understand your objection.
My objection is the cost. I think the contract came in at $15,000.
Came in at $11,200 and was revised to $9,200.
I don't think we got any revision.
I can provide the date that was sent. It says my meeting is going to end in a few days.
I mean, the issue was, we were not informed that there was going to be an architectural peer review. A contract was signed without the developer having the benefit of looking at the proposal for it. We only actually got it, I think, a month ago and we looked at it and the scope seemed to be quite far-reaching at this point in time. The project is in the conceptual stage when it comes to architecture. So either you like the massing or you don't. That's really, you know, what this architectural peer review is all about. So we were concerned when we saw the cost and really taken aback that a contract could have been entered into obligating the developer to pay a fee that they weren't aware of.
Let's set aside you're being offended by your not being consulted. Let's deal with where we are now.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, we'd be happy to authorize an architectural peer review for $5,000 or $6,000 and we'd be happy to drop that check off if we can get that peer review in here before the six months are up. There is a lot of frustration on the developer's part. We submitted many documents on the civil peer review going back 90, almost 90 days now. We submitted more money that was requested of the civil peer reviewer. We have no civil peer review feedback on anything that we've submitted. So we are thrilled that traffic is tied up. We're happy a discussion is going with regard to the sewer. We don't have a problem with an architectural peer review. We just need to see that the scope is limited to what the project that's being proposed in front of you. We haven't heard anything about the architectural, that it hadn't begun. In fact, the traffic peer review, and I'm sorry, but I do need to put this on the record, we approved a traffic peer reviewer. We sent money in and a contract was signed with another traffic peer reviewer.
That contract was never signed.
But that's what was shown to us. So there's been a lot of hiccups administratively along, on the process and every meeting, you know, costs my, you know, my client money and I would be doing him a disservice if I didn't express the frustration. We've done our best to keep up with everything.
Your client's frustration will be duly noted and taken into consideration when we make our ultimate decision. But let's get cooperative, let's move forward as quickly as we can. I know you expressed frustration. I understand, a month has gone by, apparently, from when you were notified about a request for architectural peer review and the board is just hearing about this now. So I want to move things forward. I'm not going to argue with you anymore, but we're going to move this forward. So the question is, are we going to have your approval for an architectural peer review or not?
You have my approval, but I haven't seen the revised scope that we asked for. So I was waiting for a revised scope. That's all. I mean, you know, you and I can only do what we can with what we have in front of us and the flow of information has been frustrating. So if I had seen a revision, I would have responded to it within 48 hours.
Well, you realize that we don't produce these reports and we're limited by the timeframe that the consultants that we contact can respond.
I'm happy to work.
And we're now obviously in the holiday season.
Understood.
And it takes longer, frankly, for things to seem to happen.
So I'm happy to work off.
But let's move forward as expeditions.
I'm happy to work offline with Jasmine if she gets me the revision and if it makes sense to us, I will have John bring a check over. But I need to know when they're going to deliver it and what's included in their scope. My request was that the scope of services be done on an hourly basis because I can't understand how they would rack up that much time for something so limited. I don't think that that request was unreasonable, so I will look at what she sends me.
Which was sent November 18th. You received that breakdown of the $9,200 cost that broke down the hourly rate.
Why don't you resend that and I will take a look at it? The holdup here is the civil. There is a lot, a lot that we responded to on the civil. There were pages and pages and pages of comments on the civil.
And we're still awaiting for the report from the peer reviewer that we use all the time. It's worked for this town for many years on many projects and we have a good relationship with them. I can't answer what's taking them longer than you're satisfied with. All we can do is request that they get the report to us as quickly as they can so that we can get it to you and we can have a meeting where we discuss those issues. But until we get the report, we have nothing to give you and that's not helping advance this process and this project for you or for the board.
Agreed, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Everyone's just doing their job here. We think this is a really nice project. We think it's worth everyone's consideration. We want to make sure that we answer, you know, all of the questions you have, but a lot of times we feel like we're kind of, you know, operating in the dark on this. So we will do our best to keep moving things forward. You know, with regard to the civil peer review, after our submission, 30 days went by and then we got a request for more money. That was 45 days ago. So, you know.
We have been waiting for the report as long as you have been.
Yeah, and we're concerned that.
Only so much we can do to generate the report. As I said, it's an engineering firm that we've worked with repeatedly, has a long history of performing services for the town. As far as we're concerned, they perform their services very well and this is unusual, but it is what it is and we hopefully will have the report. I'm repeating myself now.
Understood.
But have the report as soon as we can get it. And as soon as we get it, it's going to go to you.
Awesome. So it sounds like we're, you know, traffic check, Haley and Ward, we're going to work offline on that. We'll try and make Phil available to come in for a meeting to, you know, continue the discussion about the relocation of the sewer line. If we, you know, obviously you're not able to come to some resolution offline with your contractor and other than that, we're, you know, kind of at the mercy of the civil engineer to move things forward.
Exactly, I understand. I think that probably brings what we can accomplish tonight to an end, unless there's anything more that you think we can address. But I think we've addressed what I expected we would be able to address and we've made some progress on other things.
Agreed, agreed, yeah, I mean, you know.
Our next meeting is scheduled to be Tuesday, December 23rd at 7:00 PM. Would you be, are you available? I know it's Christmas.
I am not available, my office is closed that week. I could potentially remote in. I'd like to see, you know, Phil's availability, certainly we can put it on the agenda and if we're not able to hit anything.
That would be the second Tuesday in January, so I guess the option would be continue it tonight to the 23rd or just right January 9th, but it sounds like you prefer the 23rd.
I think there may be people that can. Hang on one second.
It's January 13th, John.
We're having a problem. Mr. Chairman, we're just having a problem with the Zoom. And that's more of a problem tonight because your quorum is on Zoom. And so losing the Zoom means we have to stop the meeting. And so we think we can reboot it, but it's about to expire, I'm told, and we may be able to bring it back, but we don't, Jasmine doesn't understand why it's cycling the way it is. So just FYI, we may lose it in a couple seconds and have to bring it back.
So just in, you know, in the interest of time, I think we should extend to the 23rd.
Okay.
It may be that people might, you know, be remote, oh shoot.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, for those of you who are watching live or listening live, we have lost the Zoom feed, so we're going to take a brief recess while we attempt to recover that.
Is there something with the settings?
It's our.
Jasmine?
Can hear us all right, everybody?
Can you hear us is the question?
Yes. Yep, we can hear you as well. Okay. I've been told this problem with Zoom may happen every 30 minutes. So we'll try and time things so we can move appropriately. I think before we, the Zoom crashed, we were talking with Ms. Sweet about her preference to continue the matter to December 23rd, with the possibility that we may need to continue it to our first meeting in January, depending upon the available, availability of somebody from the applicant being present. But I think for tonight, we would need a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, December 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trevethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Sweet, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'll see you in a few weeks.
And look forward to seeing someone on the 23rd, or if not, you on, I think it's January 9th.
Yeah, I wrote that down.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's January 13th, John, second Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, next item on the agenda is going to be 10-60 Main Street. A comprehensive permit request. And here comes the applicant. Okay, everybody's here. Good to go. Excellent. Okay, next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing involving 10-60 Main Street. A Chapter 40B comprehensive permit request. The hearing opened on January 7th, 2025, and has been the subject of multiple hearings until the most recent one on November 25th, 2025. And the matter was continued until today. And Mr. Angler, the applicant's representative is here. And I believe what we are here to do, Board members and sitting on this matter are Brian Forstall, Ryan Sullivan, and myself. And we have had a draft decision as revised by Town Council submitted to us. And our, our purpose tonight, I believe, is to, to consider that. We have not entered into deliberations as yet. The public hearing has been continued to December 11th, thanks to Mr. Angler's gracious granting of that so that we could continue to have conversation and discussion with him as we try to come to a resolution on some of the issues. The Town Council has prepared a draft decision. And also, we received some waiver, a list of waivers to go over. However, I don't believe the waiver form list was sent to the, my fellow Board members along with the decision that was drafted. I know I didn't receive it. Brian, Ryan, Stu, did you receive a, an exhibit?
I, I believe something came through about 5 o'clock today.
Yeah.
But I, I haven't had a chance to look back at-
Exactly.
At that yet.
I was going to suggest that we, we were not going to take the waivers up tonight because, or vote on the waivers at least, because we haven't reviewed the form. And again, I apologize for the, that not being submitted along with the application of the decision. We can go through the decision, however. I know since our last meeting, Mr. Angler and Town Council have had some communications and have come to some agreements on language and others remain at issue. And Brian, how would you like to go forward with this?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just offer a couple of comments. So that's true, as you'll recall from the last time we all met, I had promised to provide a next draft and communicate with the applicant's representative, exchange redline versions, and try to provide as complete a draft as could be for this evening's meeting. We did do that. We had a conversation. We exchanged emails and some additional drafts. What I had done preliminary to tonight is just clean up the redline a little bit, things that were just, you know, stylistic or not objectionable or controversial. I cleaned those up. You'll see in the right-hand column that there are comments. So anything that was a, you know, a policy decision for this board to make and something I didn't have the authority to, to make on my own, I left that for you to consider tonight. So I might suggest, as we did for the last, you know, sort of run through of the waivers, what you might want to do is go down, you know, page by page. I don't think we need to read this. It's a very long document, obviously. But if any Board members have any questions, comments, concerns, anything on any of the paragraphs or any of the comments, why don't we just put a hold as we go through it on those and stop? Obviously, if there's anything else, even if it's not highlighted, that any Board member wants to discuss or has a question on, just hold us there and we'll stop and, and discuss that as well. Some things are, you know, I don't think we need to necessarily spend a lot of time on, others you may wish to. And so in the interest of getting through it, but making sure we spend, you know, your time this evening productively, I would suggest we just begin at page one and see where you want to hold things up for discussion. And of course, there's a comment on, on paragraph one on page one. So that's probably where we'll start.
Well, let me just make sure that all the Board members have before them the same draft that I have before me. Because if they don't, then we're going to have to take step back. Brian, and Ryan, what I'm looking at is a, a draft decision where the first paragraph entitled procedural history has a blue section and a white sec, a yellow section. And to the right of that, one says commented parenthesis GE1, and below that is commented parenthesis BW2R1. Do all of you have that decision to work off of?
That's the version I have. Yep.
Doesn't look like the one I have. All right, I'm going to go look harder for that one.
Okay, let me give you a minute or two for that.
Is it possible to put that on the screen?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
Jasmine says yes, and that's what we're going to do. And even those, I don't think are like, I think it's mostly clarifications. We are asking for some considerations in some areas, but I, I don't think we're ducking anything. I think it's just a matter of some timing on some requests. And then two, I thought we candidly were done with the waivers. I mean, we went through all the waivers. They were all voted on.
I've seen that form a couple times. I, I'm surprised to hear that the Board needs to review them again because they're in substantially the same form as what was voted on two or three or four hearings ago. So I'm confused as to where we are with the waivers because I thought we had six or seven things to go through with the decision and that was kind of it.
Well, my, my understanding is that we did go over the waivers and we reviewed them sort of one by one, but we didn't take a formal vote on them. And that's what we need, that's what we need to do.
I, I thought we did vote.
So the Board did take a straw poll on those. And they'll take an ultimate vote to approve or not approve. That incorporates the waivers at the end of this process. But there is something different about the waivers grid that they have. And that's that I've added the fourth column. That includes the language capturing the Board's anticipated vote on each one. So there's nothing different about what's in front of the Board than the last two or three meetings. It's just that there's an additional column where I've actually written what that vote is anticipated to be. And so if the Board is okay with that language, then there's nothing to discuss. But if the Board wants to look at that and just make sure that it's captured accurately, then pause and make sure it's captured accurately. But nothing substantively has, has changed about the waivers list.
Okay.
With respect to their requests or the language that I put in with the Board's position on those requests.
Right, that, that's what I understood, that, that we still had to take a formal vote as part of the process where we vote on the decision.
The entire thing.
The entire?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I don't find that. The most recent version you sent on December 5th doesn't have that blue marking.
Okay.
It could be you're just not showing the comments, showing the track changes.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right.
It was in my book, so that-
I think I just can't, I don't think I can see the comments as well.
Somebody in planning had it and printed it out for me, so.
I think I have to download it and, um-
Oh, you're not looking at it through Word?
That's right.
That's why. It's not showing the track changes.
Technology is a great thing, but sometimes I wish we just went back to pen and paper and life was easier.
It's not serving us well tonight.
No.
Not in the least. Okay, I can share what I have.
Is there something with the settings?
It's our-
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 Okay.
With respect to their requests or the language that I put in with the Board's position on those requests.
Right, that, that's what I understood, that, that we still had to take a formal vote as part of the process where we vote on the decision.
The entire thing.
The entire?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I don't find that. The most recent version you sent on December 5th doesn't have that blue marking.
Okay.
It could be you're just not showing the comments, showing the track changes.
Yeah.
You're, I think you're exactly right.
It was in my book, so that-
I think I just can't, I don't think I can see the comments as well.
Somebody in planning had it and printed it out for me, so.
I think I have to download it and, um-
Oh, you're not looking at it through Word?
That's right.
That's why. It's not showing the track changes.
Technology is a great thing, but sometimes I wish we just went back to pen and paper and life was easier.
It's not serving us well tonight.
No.
Not in the least. Okay, I can share what I have.
It's going to be able to read that.
I'll zoom it in.
No.
Jasmine?
Yes.
It, it looks like you, on the view, you have it set to, on, on review, you should show all mockup as opposed to clean view?
So you have simple-
So up, up under the review tab, to click on that and where it has track changes, click it to all mockup.
Thank you.
Then you'll be able to see.
Thank you, guys. There we go. Yeah.
There we go.
That should be all of it. That's all of it. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I think we're back on track. And so the first, the first comment is on first page, paragraph one.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Angler, do you want to talk briefly what your, the comment was?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to approach the podium for each comment or is it okay if I sit? I guess I have to speak.
I think you need to stand just so the microphone will pick it up.
Fair enough. So relative to the first comment, we've had, I don't know how many hearings and been here 11 months, and we've, I've never heard of anybody making a peep about changing the affordability. Moreover, under 40B, what's being requested there by the town is explicitly not allowed. And C, I don't think the Board or whoever was behind this condition understands the financial impact of that request. On a capitalized value, that's about a $1.7 million ask. So that's just, that's the only one that we're going to talk about that is, we're, we're, we can't live with in any shape or form.
Okay. Board members, any questions on that?
Yes. So I understand it's a $1.7 million ask. What is that in proportion to the overall capital value? Roughly?
5%, 3%?
Thanks.
Okay, and just for clarification, this, the sentence below that in yellow is what's being proposed?
That, that's correct. And just to, to follow along, if it has strike-throughs, that's what the applicant has proposed deleting. If there is a highlight but no strike-throughs, that language is intended to remain.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, moving on to page two.
I, I have one comment on page two. Brian, on project and property description number one, it says revise through September 15th, 2025, towards the bottom. And it's actually September 16th. That was highlighted to me.
And it also says revision nine. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, but it's just September 16th, not 15th.
Excellent. I have that.
That was pointed out, so that's.
Anybody have any questions on page two?
No, none.
Moving on to page three.
One, one, one second. I do, just, you know, spelling, paragraph nine on page two has pubic, should be public.
Mm-hmm. Good catch. Okay, moving on to page three. Nothing's highlighted. Any questions, anybody? Moving on to page four. Nothing's highlighted. Any questions? Hearing nothing. Moving on to page five. The only highlighted in yellow would be the vote and the members that voted. And that obviously has not happened as yet. Any other questions on any other part of page five? And page, okay, page six, number of colored paragraphs. There's a large section in blue from Mr. Angler. And why don't you discuss that just briefly for us?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, really all we're asking there is, we certainly need, would, would need to adhere to not being able to pull a building permit until we have final approval and not being able to commence with construction until the building inspector and designated engineer have reviewed all our plans. I think our issue is with the inclusion of the word site preparation. Customarily, the developer is allowed to do site prep before receipt of a building permit. I would suggest on this site in particular, where we're, we're going to be working with DEP and may need to, you know, do some things with the soils and other things, we're simply asking the Board to allow us to do site work prior to the condition, but that we will not be able to start with any of the building or building foundation until we've satisfied the language here. So that, that's really the distinction.
Okay. And if I may add, for the Board's benefit, the, the site prep restriction is usually left in the decision when we're talking about an undisturbed site. We don't want to moonscape, you know, before we know that they can actually go forward with the project. In this case, where it's an already developed site, this is going to be a redevelopment, there's less of a concern there.
Okay.
In fact, I don't think there's any-
Anyone?
-clearing that the applicant's going to be doing, so.
Anyone have any questions on that?
My only question is, would it be possible to get a little bit tighter definition on the scope of site work that would be desired beforehand? Just, you know, general, general parameters on that.
I could try to provide that. It'd basically be anything other than the building. As I said, it would be soil removal. It would be things associated with DEP. It could be the, you know, installation of things, erosion control measures. I mean, that's site work. All of those things would fall under site work. We might have some limited demolition. So I don't, I don't know how specific Counselor, the Board, if we want to perends or something like that, Counselor. You know, we could endeavor to do that. Or it's really every, anything other than the, I mean, the building permit will govern the stuff that the town cares most about, the foundation and everything above it. But short of that, we have a lot of work to do to be able to get to that point. And I would put it to the town and the neighbors that forcing us to wait is going to elongate the construction and, you know, make it unduly difficult to kind of get going. It's going to take us 10 months to do the construction drawings for this project, which is fairly complicated. And it's a nice opportunity to be able to do some things concurrently, be doing some of the site work on a limited basis while that's going on, and then have everything neatly wrapped up for the building inspector and the engineering department and the like to review it as part of the building permit application. Hopefully that makes sense.
And may I add as well that some of the site prep work, because it concerns the environmental component of this, is work we, the Board and the town probably wouldn't want to see delayed. Because it benefits, usually this language is in here to prevent disturbance of a site too soon. You know, before the final plans are together, the construction drawings and, and a building permit is on the doorstep. In this case, some of that work actually, for the reasons the representative, the applicant just stated, but also some of the environmental work that's going to be required to be done is work that we probably want done in any event. And so it would make sense to, to- And so it would make sense to, to allow that to proceed notwithstanding. And so the, the typical sort of gatekeeping function is still in here.
Okay.
And all that site work, as councillor alluded, is governed or is regulated by DEP. So it's not like we're just going to be out there kind of going wild. I mean, all the site work is, is under our remedial action plan. So it, it, and moreover, we're going to have to do a lot of that work in order to be able to, you know, move forward with the building. So I, I, I think what we've proposed here is, is reasonable.
Okay. That answer satisfy you, Ryan?
It does.
Okay. Moving on to item number five on that page, there's a multi-line sentence in pink, I guess, from Brian. And Brian, why don't you tell us about that?
Well, so actually, this change was suggested by the applicant. What's highlighted there is my comment, just saying I'll reserve this
Oh.
for discussion this evening. And so just to, to get ahead of it a little bit, normally there's a, a process for modification. And the board makes a determination, whether it's insubstantial or substantial, and there's a process for each of those. What this change suggests is that, you know, quote unquote, minor changes, you know, could be approved by the building commissioner. And, and, you know, obviously there's some detail in there that suggests what that would be. And the building commissioner has the ability to refer it to the zoning board if there's a question. And I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, but I, I said, I suspect that that's somewhat reflective of just, you know, how this happens in the real world, right? I mean, there are going to be minor changes, sometimes we call them field changes, you know, when something's underway. And they're not, they're, they're not really things that need to come back to the board necessarily. And so the, the permitting official, being the building commissioner, you may want to allow some discretion there for things that are just so insubstantial, it's not worth coming back to the board for. If there's ever a question as to what should come back to the board for a, you know, a review under an insubstantial modification, the language allows for that as well. So I didn't think I had the authority to agree or disagree with this, it's a board decision ultimately. And so I brought it back so that you could have a conversation with the applicant about it.
Board members, what do you think?
No issue on my end.
Okay, I don't have an issue with it as well. It seems like minor changes and having it adjusted by the building commissioner and not having to come back before us unless he determines it's a major, potential major change.
So I guess there'll be three tiers. There'll be minor, which doesn't even register on the radar. Building commissioner will handle it in-house. Then there'll be an insubstantial change, which this board does have to, to see and approve. And then there's a substantial change, which would be the highest tier, that, that generates a new public hearing.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yep, sounds good to me as well.
And I see there's a typo on building commission, it should be building commissioner. I'll pick that up.
Okay. Okay, moving on to page seven. Any questions on that page? Nothing is highlighted.
At the very bottom, there's a no blasting.
I'm sorry.
I had originally just put in a placeholder to determine whether or not we needed to add any guardrails with respect to blasting. The applicant's representative has confirmed there will not be blasting, and so I just made it explicit.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Mr. Engler, any problem with that?
Nope.
Okay. Page eight, any questions, board members?
None on my end.
Okay.
No.
Page nine, several.
I have one comment that's not in, on 15, you can keep scrolling, Jasmine, on the, the last sentence. For clarification, as it reads now, it says unsuitable contaminated materials may not be used and may not be otherwise kept, repurposed or stored on the site. Could we add comma unless approved by DEP as part of its review and approval of the RAM plan? Because I think there may be unsuitable materials that are allowed to be, you know, remain on the site unless, you know, with an appropriate cap or barrier or whatnot. And as that reads, every unsuitable piece of soil needs to leave the site. And I don't think that's necessarily required. I mean, DEP is ultimately the governor, governor of that, but, so we're just asking the, the board and the decision to defer to their judgment on what can and can't leave the site. Does that make sense?
I, I understand the comment, it just creates a little bit of a, of a paradox, right? Because if it's unsuitable, then by definition, it's something that's not suitable for use. And so if, if it's something that DEP determines is contaminated but suitable, that, there's still maybe a subcategory there, and I feel like we're splitting strange hairs here.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be argumentative. All I'm saying is if there's some language that you can think of that allows us, if there's some sort of soil that is quote unquote contaminated, that DEP is allowing us to keep on the site, I don't want the board to be able to say, no, you can't because of decision 15. You know what I'm saying?
I understand. So we're, we're going to have another draft of this before we're done. If it's okay with the board, maybe I can take a shot at that and see if I can create language that addresses my concern and the applicant's concern that the board might find acceptable.
That's fine with me, board members, is that okay?
Sounds good to me.
Me as well.
Okay. Going into paragraph 17.
I can take this one. So all, all we're asking is that the O and M plan at the building permit be limited to the stormwater management system. And then all O and Ms related to the project would be a requirement of our initial CO. So the town still has the power and, you know, the CEO is super important to us. So if the town is not satisfied, we only raise this because some of the O and M plans are not very well written by the time we're filing for a building permit. It's not till everything's installed, everybody sees how everything is going to be working, and then the O and M plans can be more. So would be willing to do the stormwater management O and M plan, a full plan as part of the building permit, but just defer the other O and M plans to a condition of the certificate of occupancy.
Brian? Your thoughts?
It seems like a reasonable request and the, the end game is to get the CO, so I think that's okay.
Okay, and counsel?
I actually support this, I think it makes sense. I just didn't feel like I had the jurisdiction to, to say so until tonight. But you're going to get a, get a better product, that's the thing. So if you get a preliminary O and M, it's not going to be very satisfying because it's just, we're not at that stage of the project. And so if you get it at a later stage of the project, it's going to be more comprehensive, it's going to have more detail, and it's going to be more pragmatically based on, on what's actually going to happen. So you're just going to get a better work product. So I think this does make sense.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? It does seem to make sense as it's being explained to me.
Works for me.
Okay. Moving on to page number 10. Nothing is highlighted, any questions on that page? And if not, number 11, paragraph 32. Looks like the.
So this relates to the Mill Street Dam?
The industry dam.
This was a condition that had been inserted, I think, pretty early in the drafting process. I, I don't really have much to add on it, other than it was a condition that was requested.
Was that presuming that there would be blasting of some sort?
I, I don't know how to answer that. If there were blasting, it, it, that would kind of make sense. You know, if it, if it weren't included in the pre-blasting, you know, survey, that we want to make sure that something like that was included. But now that it's clear that there isn't any blasting, I'm not sure a pre-construction survey makes sense without blasting. But I wasn't the, the source of this, so I don't, I don't know if any board members had more insight on that than me, maybe.
I don't recall this being discussed by this board and the applicant at all during the, during the process.
It was not, Mr. Chairman, and, and.
I know, we talked about the, the bridge, and there's provision in here about the bridge. But I don't recall any discussion about the, about the dam.
There, you're correct, Mr. Chairman. And also, in my experience, pre-construction surveys are required as a condition of blasting. And we're not blasting here, so it seems extraneous.
Fellow board members, any problems if that paragraph is stricken?
Is there a way to add that assuming there's no blasting going on, the applicant doesn't need to do it? But we already agreed in the previous, no blasting will take place, that some could, but it would have to be added. So could we reverse engineer 32 to agree with that other one?
So, I, I mean, we could put a caveat, but it, it seems like now we're, we're kind of speculating on something that may or may not happen. So if, if the applicant decided to include blasting, the applicant would have to come back here. And that would be the time for us to say, okay, well, if, if you're going to do that, then we want to talk about what's included under the pre-blasting survey. And we would talk about that circumference. And that's when we would build it back into the decision, I think.
That's why you get the big bucks, I agree with you though.
So there would be protection in that way?
Right, there would be another process, another meeting with this board where we would talk about the implications of blasting being introduced to this project. And we'd have a whole nother conversation at a duly noticed meeting of this board.
Okay, as long as we have, you know, that protection, I'm fine with this being eliminated. Brian, Ryan, your thoughts?
I'm fine with being made as well.
Yeah, I agree, eliminate it, and, yeah.
Moving on then to page 12.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can articulate this. Really, this proposed change is for the benefit of the town, in my opinion. Because we could get a first, final certificate of occupancy and only be like half-full relative to tenancy. And I would imagine that the board, really the way finding signs will have all those, but they may be slightly altered once we're fully occupied, because we may find that there's certain minor things that are going on that are different than what one would have expected. So we were only suggesting that we provide all of this sign package once the building is, call it substantially, you know, occupied, stabilized, or some, maybe six months after the final CO, to provide a more accurate representation of the final signage package. I mean, if, as written, if the board was like, no, we like it, we wouldn't have a problem. I'm just, I just think it would be more kind of final and illustrative to delay it a little bit.
And counsel, your thoughts?
I don't think I had an objection to the concept, it was just, as long as we had, you know, a well-defined milestone for when it was triggered. Nobody wants to be in an argument
Yeah.
three years from now.
No, why, why, I mean, do you want to say 120 days after the final, final certificate of occupancy? You know, we'll, we'll be a fuller building at that point, it's not that big a difference, but I, I'm just throwing it out there, if it complicates it, we can do it, but.
Ms. Engler, I assume there would, there would still be some preliminary sign package that's obviously put in place
Of course.
before the CO is issued. So you're just talking about refining it later on within 120 to be to the final version that it will be going forward?
Correct.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to adjust as you see reality after, after some time passes.
Makes sense to me. Okay. Y'all set on that?
Yes.
Yep.
Moving on to page 13. Paragraph number 42. Traffic and parking monitoring.
I mean, once again, here, I would think that the objective of the town is to see how we're really, you know, how do our counts, how's the driveway usage compared to what was projected? And to have it once again, six months from initial occupancy, we might only be half-full. So that would not be a representative, representative data. So we were saying, when the project reaches stabilized occupancy, now I recognize that's amorphous. So maybe if councillor wanted to say, you know, within 12 months of, of initial CO, I think that provides a more definitive timeline. And, you know, within 12 months, we should be, I don't know if we'll be full, but we'll be, you know, hopefully approaching that. So instead of stabilized occupancy, maybe we say from, within 12 months of, of initial CO.
And, and that was my concern, we just don't have a definition or a metric for stabilized occupancy. So we're just not going to know when it happens. And so I think just putting in something that's a more specific defined milestone makes sense. And 12 months? I mean, that's probably.
Could you use percent of occupancy?
I mean, we could, but councillors, you know, we, we might, what, if it's, say, that's 75% and then, you know, somebody moves out and we're now at 73. And it probably just is easiest on everybody, and I think we'll be reasonably accurate if we just said, I mean, my recommendation would be 12 months from initial CO.
Yeah, I, I mean, my, I, I, I think there is some merit to Stuart's suggestion, which maybe we could say that it'll be done upon the earlier occurrence of either 75% occupancy or 12 months from issuance of CO. And, and, and that number for 75%, I don't know if that's a standard that makes sense either. I was just suggesting some interval as well as an outside date.
I think that makes a nice compromise. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay, moving on to page 14. I'm not sure if that has a number or not.
Thirty, it's part of 31.
Part of 31. And. And Mr. Engler, you have.
Yeah, I mean, kind of the, the direction we're going with being as specific as possible. Our, our recommendation is we'll make a one-time payment if any of A, B, or C is above the stated threshold. Because as it was written, it was, should implement recommended improvements subject to receipt. We don't even know what that is and when that would be. So I, I think our suggestion is much more concrete and definitive.
And counsel, your thoughts?
So I would just like to circle back. So what I've done in others' situations is if, if we can identify what those improvements are, and they're within the scope of funding that the applicant is willing to, to pay for, then we should just identify them. You know, if there's, you know, three improvements that were recommended in the traffic report, and that's what we're talking about, then we should just say it. And so I just want to circle back on this one. It's not that I necessarily object to this approach, it's that if we know what we're talking about, and we don't have to be vague and open-ended, then let's be specific and just say it. But that might not be possible. I, I need to look back at the report and, and speak with those folks and, and see if we can actually just itemize it.
So is your recommendation to reach back out to Bob at MDM and ask him?
No, I'm going to do it myself, actually, I'm going to go back and, and look at the report.
Look at the report.
Yeah, and, and if, and if I find it big and ambiguous, then it's not going to work.
Yeah, I honestly don't even remember what was recommended, because I thought we were doing everything that was recommended. And this is kind of a hypothetical or contingency. But that, I mean, if you want to look at it, Mr. Chairman or Brian, and if he finds something, we'll certainly look at that. I mean, I was hoping to close all these out, but, you know, that, that's okay.
Yeah, I would prefer your approach, counsel, and.
Yeah, and I would just. Yeah, and I would just hate to find out that it's in the record that there were discussions about certain improvements, those were agreed to, and, and this just doesn't get us where we want it to go, so I just want to make sure I, I've got that covered. Otherwise, you know, I don't have a problem with approaching it this way, I just want to double-check.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we're going to write new conditions, if it's, it's not there, then it's not there. I'm not going to go ask anybody to come up with it, and so I don't think this is anything more than just, you know, crafting an appropriate condition. So it's, it shouldn't hold up the process at all, we just want to get the language correct.
Okay. So we're all set on that?
Huh?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Engler?
No, I, I agree with Counselor's approach. I, I was just going to say, we don't have any further comments to the decision.
And moving on to page 15, there's a section entitled Affordable Housing Restrictions in Units, and it appears that there are concerns by someone with the initials S.K.
Stephen Kiefer, whose team issue?
I mean, that, that's our legal counsel, but the, the language as represented is fine, and I, I don't think Counselor.
I was going to say, I don't quite see how we're imposing.
Yeah, so those comments probably should have just come out, but I, I think as, as represented in the draft, everything in there is fine.
Okay, excellent, then we will keep that section in. Item page 16. Anybody have any questions? There's nothing highlighted on that page.
None on my end.
Nope.
I'm sorry, does somebody have a comment? No. On page 17, nothing highlighted, anybody have any questions or comments on that? Page 18, nothing highlighted, anyone have questions or comments on that?
Nope.
And page 19, nothing highlighted, and no, any questions or comments on that page? And the remaining graphs, Exhibit A will be dates of hearings. That will be filled in by Jasmine, working with our counsel, before we sign the agreement, or the decision, I should say. Exhibit B, materials submitted, will also be prepared and filled out by Jasmine and counsel prior to signing the agreement. Civil plans likewise, that's Exhibit C. And Exhibit D, architectural plans. And Exhibit E will be the waivers, and that's the form that we discussed at the start of the hearing. We had a straw poll several meetings ago, and this would just be the final approval and vote to approve the waiver requests as part of the overall hearing decision.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I believe I circulated that as well, and there were no questions, concerns, comments, or red lines on it, so it's, it's as intact as it was the last time you saw it.
Okay, that's very good. And Brian, and Ryan, you clear on the process?
I am on the process for the decision, the only question I had is, do we have it, we're having additional public comment? Is that?
We're going to have public comment at the end of this meeting, because I neglected to open it up for public comment the last time.
It's been going more than 30 minutes. We're good.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm asking what's being asked of me, it's, just out of curiosity, are Exhibit C and D, are you really going to put the whole plan set in the decision, or are you just going to reference it?
I will reference counsel.
Well, if we put it in there, then he has to record the entire thing, and it's going to make this document enormous.
We're not going to do that.
So I, I wouldn't recommend we do that.
Can't we just do the list of index of the plans and schedules?
And they're referenced, and it's referenced in the decision. So, so here's my interpretation of, of what happened this evening, I think we made it through everything other than that condition on the traffic mitigation, which you're going to look at, and the waivers are going to be reviewed by the board, although they're, in my opinion, and I think counsel's largely what was already reviewed and approved. Is, I, I don't think anyone's asking anything of me, or to even review anything, other than if you change that decision, that condition?
May I?
By all means.
I just have one asterisk on that, and to inform the board as well. So there was a, a list of additional conditions for consideration, and I just wanted the board to know that I had passed that on to Mr. Engler. We had a, a conversation around that, and the result of that, and Mr. Engler can characterize it for himself if he wishes, is that there may be one or two things that are TBD with respect to inclusions and conditions. One concerning the potential best efforts to reuse granite, the other being some form of contribution to assist the town with its review of the activity and use limitation process and, and documentation. So those are TBD, we don't have conditions for those now, I have not put them in the document, that's why we haven't spoken about it, but I wanted the board to know that I have discussed that with Mr. Engler, and I am going to take a stab at drafting two conditions for his consideration that we may come back with on the next round.
Okay, yeah, it would be helpful if that could be done and get the results of that communication with Mr. Engler to the board members as soon as possible, and definitely before the next meeting, so we can be in position to have a, a decision to vote on?
The, the expectation is that after you hear public comment tonight, you'll be in a position to close the public hearing, and at the next meeting, we'll have wrapped up every loose end. And you'll be in a position to take your, your ultimate vote, your final vote.
Okay.
That would be the, the expectation.
Okay, so after public comment tonight, we would entertain a motion to close the hearing, and we would then enter that 40-day period of deliberation?
Correct, except.
At which most of the deliberation will have already been done.
That's correct.
And we can very quickly vote on the decision. And then.
All of the things that we've tackled during the public hearing have now been, for the most part, resolved, so we don't have any loose ends that would justify keeping the public hearing open, that's one consideration for the board. The second is, most of the things that we would do during the 40-day deliberation period would normally be to write and work on and finalize a decision, and we're very far in that process already, so for your next meeting, if that's continued to, I think, was it the 23rd? We should very certainly be in a position to have a final product in front of you for your vote at that night.
Okay, I mean, that works for me, Brian, Ryan, you on board with that timeframe?
That works for me as well.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Stu?
I have a question, could, could the council discuss the threshold for voting? In other words, my question specifically is, does it have to be a unanimous vote, or can it be a split vote? Could there be a negative vote, and still the project moves forward?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please answer the question, yes.
So 40B only requires a majority vote, not a supermajority vote, and so I'm not sure what you meant by a negative vote or a split vote, but it just requires a simple majority. Not unanimous.
And there are three hearing members sitting on, on it, so it would need to be a vote of three to nothing, two to one, one to two, or zero to three? And zero to three and one to two would deny the comprehensive permit, and I'm not sure how that would work.
I mean, it depends on the motion that's made.
But it's two to one.
But assuming it's an affirmative motion to approve the project as presented, and the, and the comprehensive permit and waivers and exhibits prepared by counsel and staff, that would have to pass by at least two votes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, yes, Mr. Engler?
Yeah, can I ask one more question, and I'm sorry to be difficult, but and I know you, you can't commit to this, but the 23rd is my mom's 80th birthday, and my whole family and extended is going out, I, I can't be here that night. So I'm wondering if it needs to be continued, or if it's really, everything is going to be buttoned up. I probably could have somebody else appear in my place that obviously has far less knowledge of this project than I do. You know, it frightens me to not, in case there was some issue that needed to be discussed, so I just put that out there. You know, we, I can't have counsel, or, or my partner, or somebody show, appear, and because of the board is really going to be just voting. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, thank you for letting us know that, I guess my preference would be that we continue the hearing to our first meeting in January, at which point, if you, well, let me back up. We have a deadline extension to December 11th, so we would need an extension beyond that, obviously.
For the public hearing?
For the public hearing.
But not for deliberation.
Because it's going to be communication back and forth, so I don't want to close the public hearing, not have Mr. Engler be here on the 23rd, have the matter continued to January, I think, was it 13th he said? At which point, the 40-day period is almost up.
No, I'm off, yeah.
Well, I have another, and I'm actually asking counsel this question. Can you give an extension to the 40-day period? Because we were going to close tonight, whether I was there on the 23rd or not, so I don't know that it impacts closing the public hearing tonight. I think it just impacts when you guys are going to take up the next matter, and if for some reason, we got to whatever, January 6th or whatever, and you needed a few more days, you know, you know, we've worked collaboratively, and if Counselor's saying, I can give an extension to the 40 days, I'd obviously rather not, but if it was necessary, I'm certainly confident we could find it.
I appreciate that, and, you know, I'm perfectly comfortable with doing that, based on your representation, that if we needed a couple of extra days in order to get this decision signed and filed with the town clerk, we're not all present in person to sign the, to sign the decision, so somebody has to come in and then the office, and then it has to get taken down to town clerk and filed, so.
Yeah, no, listen, I.
On your representation that you would grant a brief extension of the 40-day period if needed, that is acceptable to me, and we'll have public comment tonight, and then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, if, if you and counsel think that's reasonable, I, I think that probably makes the most sense, and then we'll reconvene on whatever your January meeting is, and it, it gives counsel and Jasmine and, you know, a few extra days to dot the i's and cross the t's, so that the decision and everything that's put before the board at that January, I guess will just be public meeting at that point, we'll be, we'll be ready to go.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for point, 40 days from today is January 18th.
Okay, so we would need to, we might be able to complete it in time, okay. Okay, we will open the matter up for a public hearing, if anybody is in person that wishes to be heard, please line up along the wall, if you're online and wish to be heard, please raise your hands, and you can be heard, and we have had many public comments over many months on this matter, so you're going to be limited to three minutes, and please don't repeat yourself if at all possible, because we've heard the public comments at each meeting, thank you. Please identify yourself for the record, if you would.
Connie Mantle, 15 Newcastle Road, Ashland. I'm a resident, have been since 1978. Ashland has not been able to protect the town from profit-driven 40B developers. A huge unpopular number of apartments could be built. 1060 Main Street, a special concern. Ashland residents and town agencies are not getting their concerns met, residents' concerns regarding the 1060 Main Street. When residents diligently pre-submitted questions to the EPA twice, answers to both sets of questions were inadequate. This is due in large part to the inefficiency of town agents. EPA and DEP meetings were canceled at the last, last minute. Town questions were submitted too late to be answered. When the Ashland Conservation Commission raised, raised legitimate concerns about the 1060 site, the commission was excluded from oversight. The Conservation Commission still believes that local control and input is essential to the integrity of local interests. One of my biggest concerns is that the state banned Mr. Engler, the proposed developer for 1060, for one year, and then reduced it to nine months, and then put him on probation for three years. Even more concerning is that Ashland was not aware of this ban and probation. Is this the developer we want to build in the center of our town? There are many issues with 1060 Main Street, and to your point, I don't want to repeat everything we've already said. So I won't, I'll just conclude. That Ashland is being overrun by profit-driven, driven developers with no concern for the welfare of Ashland. Town zoning laws and manageable growth plans are being ignored. The town is dealing with a developer who was banned by the state and housing, state housing authority. He intends to build a totally inappropriate complex in the middle of our downtown. Environmental issues are not being addressed, the town's heritage is at stake. In short, Ashland needs to develop a state's heavy, needs to help balance the state's heavy-handedness. The town needs to protect an experienced, I'm sorry. Ashland needs the protection of an experienced 40B lawyer, who is not willing to accept the state's heavy-handedness, someone who will fight for Ashland.
Thank you. Ms. Conforti?
Joan Conforti, One Shore Road. I'm on Historical Commission, speaking as an individual. Mr. Engler, I respectfully, respectfully ask you to withdraw your application to 10 to 60 Main Street. This project will destroy the heart of our downtown, it is wrong for so many reasons. 250 apartments in a six-story building, demolishing historic granite buildings. Ashland does not have the water to support this project, but the most troubling, there's a deed restriction on this property for commercial only. There's a reason for that, this site was determined to be too dangerous for people to live there. It is built on top of the Nyansha Superfund plume. People, children in this town, died because of the contamination in this plume. I have yet to get a concrete answer for who will be held liable if people living there get sick and God forbid someone dies. I know who I will hold responsible. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, I sincerely hope you follow your conscience and deny this project. Yes, it may cost the town some money and some time, but nothing like the cost to the people who will live there and their children. I'm done writing and done asking, now it's up to you, please do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Rooney? We have Kathy Rooney online, and then Doug Small. Kathy, if you'd like to speak, may you please identify yourself?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, Kathy Rooney, 136 Fountain Street, Ashland, Mass. So, I'm just going to read from what I have here. Ashland residents and town officials have not been able to get questions properly answered for weeks. for weeks to the detrimental, to the detriment of local residents and interests. This project is on a Nianza plume. And honestly, nobody knows how that plume works. And what's going to happen when they dig in the ground and it upsets a bunch of stuff in the ground? First of all, right next to the Subbury River. And second of all, we're going to have a big hole in the ground that's leaking fumes. I can't even imagine why we've even gone this far with this project. We're about to put in 250 apartments, a six-story building. It's not condos, it's apartments. So the money is not going to stay local. It's not going to build wealth in our town and region. It's going to create untold amounts of noise and other extremely deleterious impacts. We're tearing down a national historic site of national importance that should be celebrated for what it is, not being rebuilt as cheap apartments enriching some out-of-town outfits. Taking down solid granite and replacing it with veneers, cheap and ugly materials that barely last 20 years is not doing any of us now or in the future any good. Nothing charming or beautiful will be there to look at. The price of rentals will force couples to share space in apartments as they will not be affordable for single couples, let alone couples with children. Traffic will be terrible. We need to insist on a rotary being installed down there. There isn't, there doesn't begin to be enough trees and other greenery installed to help keep the air and water clean, to lessen some of the impacts. The impacts of this project will be excessive and travel a long way. The lights, the noise, the pollution, traffic, demands on town services. If this project gets approved at all, it should be in part that they clean up and restore all the associated land from invasives and replace all of that with appropriate habitat. Last but not least, why is this developer being allowed to do work when he's been banned by the state? Why are we even discussing this? We need an experienced attorney on our side and to represent the community the way the community wants. Please vote to do the right thing and turn this project down. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine, next person?
Doug Small, please.
Hi, Doug Small, DPW Director. Assuming, assuming, assuming this project does get approved by the ZBA, what happens later in life if the owner tries to reconfigure things on the property itself? For example, it could be reducing the number of parking spots or something like that. Are there, whatever gets decided with this project, does it, does it stick for the life of the project?
Want me to respond? If you would, counsel.
So the comprehensive permit becomes the zoning for the project. And so it's recorded, it runs with the land. And if the, uh, this applicant or any future owner of the project wants to make changes to that, they have to come and see this board. And there's a regulatory process under the state 40B regulations that spell out when that has to happen and how that happens and what the thresholds are for considering those kinds of changes. But the developer is not free to just make changes to the project anytime they want, as they see fit. You know, once this leaves and, and once this comprehensive permit is decided on this level, there are still many other levels of review. It goes back to the state. There has to be a final approval. Comes back to the board. It goes to the building commissioner's office for a review of a building permit application. And so there are a lot of tiers and layers to this. And that's true, you know, what I'd like to say, pre-permitting at this point. And it's also true post-permitting.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Mr. Small?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Joseph Mignani has his hand raised as well.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Mignani.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Joe Mignani, 2 Upper Lane. I'm speaking as a resident and also a member of the select board, but a member of the traffic study committee. One of the questions that came up at our meeting today, I was made aware that there was a potential, and I'm not sure if this is accurate, that's why I'm here tonight, that the driveway that is actually on Main Street must move down 40 feet closer towards the intersection. Is that accurate?
We're not aware of that being accurate. The applicant is sitting here, heard your comments, and is shaking his head no.
Okay.
So I'm not sure where that came from.
I was, the explanation came from someone who was involved in some of the, uh, the work itself. So I wasn't sure if that was accurate or not. I just wanted to make sure. It had to do with the fact that if truck to trailers were coming into that, into that driveway for deliveries, they had to change the pitch of the driveway. And where the roadway is right now, where the driveway is right now, it wouldn't provide enough access or the proper angle and pitch for the truck to go down that, that pitch in an evenly and safe way or else it would get stuck on, on the pitch turning in. That, that was the explanation and the reason why it was allegedly that was moved down 40 feet closer to the traffic box on Main Street. The other question that I have was the preliminary site work that was part of the waiver process sparked my interest when you were talking about if he's allowed to work, to do the work prior to getting any Arkansas permits or having this comprehensive plan approved. Who would be overseeing that site work, especially because of the location and the potential issues with the Nianza plume? Though, though it is below grade, you know, it may be 10 or 15 feet further down. So who would be watching all of that preliminary work? Would a representative of the EPA? Or would there be a clerk of the works type of individual that'd be watching that and maintaining the, uh, the safety, the safety aspect of that location?
Mr. Chairman, if you want me to try my hand at that one? So it would depend on the nature of the work. If it's, if it's work that is within the jurisdiction of DEP, DEP would be supervising that and would have to review and permit that. If, for example, it were selective demolition, then that would be the building department. And so it would depend on the nature of the activity. And the threshold in that condition is just, what would the developer be allowed to do, you know, prior to the building permit? That's, you know, commencement of construction, quote unquote, as defined in the decision. And so, you know, that doesn't mean that it is unsupervised. It just means it's work that occurs prior to the, you know, 100% construction drawings being submitted, approved, and a building permit being issued.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. I just know that when that part of the discussion was happening, we was talking about, you know, moving soil and other things either onsite or moving it within the site area itself. So that's, that was, that was my concern about that. So thank you for clarifying that, Brian. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sir.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mignani. Okay. No one else online? Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
To move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Okay. We are all set on that, then. Now, to continue this for deliberations, we're going to continue it to the second week, the second Tuesday in January.
Is it the second Tuesday or two weeks from the 23rd?
It is the second Tuesday in January. January 13th is the next.
Yep. So a motion to continue deliber-
You don't need a motion to continue anymore because the public hearing's closed.
It's over.
And it's a regular business, excuse me. It's a regular business item now. And so you don't need to continue it to a date and time certain, the way you do a public hearing.
Gotcha. Thank you very much for clarifying that for me.
Although we should take the same steps to communicate when we're going to be deliberating to all interested parties.
Okay. Which will be on the agenda for the meeting in January.
Yes.
And I presume we'll get one final draft, the one that will-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And if you have any questions on some of those questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Happy eighties, too. You as well, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, number four, deliberations involving 61 Waverly Street, another 40B comprehensive permit. Public hearing opened on March 25th. And we went forward and we started deliberations on this matter. And the applicant's representative is here and stepping up to the podium. He has granted an extension of time for us to complete our deliberations to December 24th. And our next meeting after tonight would be December 23rd. Counsel, as in the previous matter, has prepared a revised draft. Don't see any particular colored changes unlike the last one. So counsel, oops, wait till we get to page 12. Could you just lead us a little bit on what we have before us?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. And so similar to the last 40B we just discussed, we had a preliminary draft decision that I had shared with the board and shared with the applicant's representative. Both sides simultaneously did some work on that draft and then, you know, exchanged revisions. What I tried to do since that time is integrate the applicant's, you know, red lines and comments into my own and harmonize the two. And so now, as we promised, we would come back to you this evening with a matured draft. You'll see that I cleaned up some of the red lines that were inconsequential, just, you know, typographical, clerical kinds of things. The more substantive things, we called out for board discussion. There were fewer of them, I believe, on this one than the last one we just discussed. But there are a few that the board should take up. We also made some revisions or some proposed revisions to the waivers matrix, just to get ahead of the conversation a little bit. I don't believe we made, you know, any substantive changes to it. There were no changes to the requests and no changes to the board's straw vote that it took in response to those requests. It was essentially wordsmithing. And I spoke with the developers representative very, very recently and tried to get a sense of where they were coming from and explain where I was coming from. And I believe we agreed to a solution to that, which I'll put into the final draft. And we can talk about that when we get to the waivers. But other than the callouts into the draft decision itself, I don't think there's, there's anything else the board needs to attend to tonight. So if it's your will, we could proceed in the same way and just stop at, at some of those comments and red lines. The first of which, I think, is on page six.
First, I wanted to just make sure that the board members have the proper draft decision in front of them. And just backing up a second, voting members on this matter are Brian Forrestall, Stu Siegel, and myself. And the draft decision we're dealing with at the moment-
We're actually watching it online, John.
I'm sorry?
We're watching it online.
Oh, okay, duh. I'm looking at the other screen where, I'm looking at me going through papers. So sorry about that, folks. I don't know which screen to look. I need a director pointing me in the right direction. Okay. Any questions on paragraph, on page one? No highlighted items. Page two, only highlighted item is entry of dates. Any questions? If not, page three, nothing highlighted. Any questions? If not, page four, nothing highlighted. Any questions? Page five, only highlighted is the area where we would enter who makes the motion and who seconds it and what the vote is. Page six, nothing highlighted. Page seven, nothing highlighted. Any questions on either six or seven? Page eight, nothing highlighted. Page nine, nothing highlighted. Page 10, nothing highlighted. Page 11, nothing highlighted. And finally, we get to page 12. And the first item is number 25, sidewalk. And counsel, why don't you lead us through this? It looks like your comment.
Just before we get to that, um-
Did I skip something?
No, it's possible I dropped the wrong, I thought we had comments earlier on the decision. No? Okay, maybe I just printed out an earlier draft. So let me just catch up with you. No, no, it's fine. So number 25. So I held this one out because, as I'm sure the board members will recall, there was a robust discussion about whether or not some preparation could be performed by the applicant to remove ledge and not to construct a sidewalk, but to prepare the area for a sidewalk if a sidewalk wasn't going to be constructed. So the board had debated that, engaged with the applicant on several occasions about that. But I don't have, in my notes at least, any conclusion of that conversation. And so I included 25 just to spur that discussion so that the board could make a decision what direction it wants to go on that and engage with the applicant sort of one last time here to see if the board wants to do something there or, or do, or otherwise.
Mr. Horowitz, why don't you take the mic, if you would, and tell us your objection? I'm assuming it's an objection to paragraph 25.
Mr. Chair, I've been called many things, but I've never been called Mr. Horowitz.
Oh, my God. Well, you know, he just joins with Ms. Swede, who I called something else at the very start of the meeting. So names is not my highlight and-
It's just a little, a little levity.
I didn't want to be so informal as to call you Israel because that name I did remember.
No worries. A little levity, given the late hour. Israel Lopez for the applicant, for the record. I know we've talked about the, the request that the board, members of board had regarding blasting along Waverly Street to remove, you know, what is over 200 linear feet of rock face in order to prepare, you know, for a potential future sidewalk in that location. And, you know, we, you know, we continue to feel very strongly that that is a very burdensome provision. It would, in fact, in our view, make the project uneconomic. It would, you know, I think I've outlined the cost for that requirement in prior correspondence through a memo that we provided from our engineer. And, you know, we've talked about it at length. Our position remains the same. And we hope the board will not impose that condition. And if we need to discuss that further this evening, you know, and go through the reasons why, you know, happy to do so. But we think it's, we've worked cooperatively to incorporate many of the other requests that the board has had into the conditions, including relocating the utility pole at the entrance, putting in a crosswalk over towards the high school and, and of course, doing some of the investigations for the sewer connection. So we think we're doing a lot in terms of just other mitigation and improvements for the project. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Brian and Stu, your thoughts on this?
I had a question. Could we go back a couple of slides on here? It says something about blasting, I believe, in one of the prior ones.
It's on page seven. Condition nine.
Yep, that's it, right there.
Yep.
So there is going to be blasting and ledge removal activities on this property, correct?
So that's actually to be determined, and we're, I don't think we'll know that until we really get into the ground on the project. It's possible that some blasting may be required. It's also very possible that no blasting will be required or minimal blasting will be required. So there's, there are different ways that, there's definitely rock on the site, so there's no question of that. In the areas where the building footprint and the parking lots are going to be, one of the key things that we did at the very onset for the project is to essentially raise the project up so that we minimize the amount of blasting that's necessary. So it's quite possible that the rock that needs to be removed can be done so with hammering and other mechanical means to do that, so blasting may not be actually required. But until you kind of, you know, remove the soil and the top layer and really get in there, you won't know the depth of that. The only way to know that would be to get in there now and do lots of cores and really drill twenty, twenty feet into the ground. So I apologize for the long-winded answer, but, you know, that...
That's no problem. But if I remember, on the meeting that we did discuss removing the ledge along Route one thirty-five, Waverly Street, you were quite certain that it would require blasting and, you know, it would, without doing core testing or anything, you knew that it was that deep and that long?
In that loc, I'm sorry, yes. In that, in that location along Waverly Street, it, in order to get down to the grade where the roadway is, you'd definitely have to blast there. I'm talking about where blasting might not be required to just build out the project, the parking lots, at the elevation that we're proposing to do so. But if the request was to kind of eliminate the ledge in that location, then for sure blasting would be required there. But we don't need to get down that far because the project site sits well above that.
Understood. I guess, you know, one of the concerns about blasting is it's blasting and it affects neighborhoods and people in the immediate area. And I just, if blasting is going to take place, I would just like to see blasting along, right along the road's edge and take care of that little bump in the road that's been there forever, that, you know, when they had horse and buggies, they just went around it. But today, it seems like it wouldn't be that big a deal to remove it when you're there with other blasting equipment.
Well, except that we wouldn't have to do any blasting in that location.
All right.
There's no blasting, you know, in fact, we're kind of going through this now with the Conservation Commission. They're entirely opposed to any blasting, not surprisingly because of other concerns with respect to potential impacts on adjacent resource areas. But the only places where we might encounter blasting are on, there's a knoll that's on the Union Street side, sort of on the eastern side of the project, and then there's another location back from Waverly Street, more towards the center of the site. And those are, you know, sort of isolated locations where there might be one or two feet of rock that we need to get to in order to build the project site, but certainly not going down ten or fifteen feet.
All right. I, I still hate to see something built that big that's going to affect that many people and leave this problem that many of the townspeople have, you know, weighed in on, that, you know, there is and there will only be more people wanting to come out of that, out of your project and walk onto Waverly Street one way or the other. And it seems like, while you have equipment there and you have all this stuff going on and you have companies moving telephone poles, it just, like, I know it's going to cost money, you know, I don't want to pay for it, don't get me wrong, but it just seems like now is the time to do it, in my opinion.
I mean, respectfully, there is no sidewalk improvement plan. It, you know, it'd be different if, I guess, the cost would still be the cost, but it'd be different in the sense that, you know, if this area were the only area that didn't have a sidewalk and we're connecting onto Union Street, onto Waverly Street, that, you know, it would make sense to perhaps provide a sidewalk there. But there is no plan for a sidewalk, no, no reason to believe that a sidewalk would ever even be built along that length of roadway. And so it'd sort of be blasting just for the sake of blasting and, and nothing else.
Yeah. I, I, I'm not sure how you come to that conclusion, and maybe you're more in the know than I am, but I didn't know there were going to be sidewalks built in the last year or two where there are now sidewalks. It was just, it became part of the plan. I don't know, maybe it was in the works for years, and I'm just not in the know. But I can see why Ashland would want a sidewalk that connects with Framingham at some point. You know, it's been mentioned, and I didn't go measure it, but it's been mentioned that the train station in Framingham is a closer walk from your project than the train station in Ashland is. And I know a lot of people don't, well, probably won't make that walk, but there may come a day when people do want to walk that. And there's also a big temple right down the street, and I can imagine some people that might want to go to that temple would walk to that temple from that, from your property. I can see that happening. So, you know, I'm still really...
I mean, honestly, I think anyone that, any engineer that spends even ten minutes looking at the feasibility of putting a sidewalk along Waverly Street will come to the conclusion that it should, if, it should be on the other side of the street. It's not just the ledge face along our property line, which we don't even control the, you know, the lot line. It's the other side of the, there's, you're going to have that same issue where you have to blast and carve into people's property for the entire stretch of Waverly Street going towards Framingham.
Yeah. And I'm not an engineer, but I did stop and walk both sides, and it seems to me that the more logical thing to do is put the telephone poles on the train track side of one thirty-five and put a sidewalk on your side of the property, just to make it easier. How many people are we putting in the, in there?
It's two-hundred-and-twenty-six units.
Yeah, so, you know, two, three-hundred people. I can just imagine that there would be some that would want to walk on that side of the street from that property without crossing, without putting, you know, crossing lights and things. Like, this is going to be the biggest thing on that side of the street, except for the temple, that would require some type of pedestrian connectivity. So I don't know, is there a way that we can delve into it more than your best guesstimate? Or how can we look at this further?
I mean, we have, we have looked at it. We've provided a memo from our engineer. We've provided a cost estimate. I'm not sure what else we could provide at this juncture. I mean, the public hearing is closed, and I don't know that we could submit anything at this point, even if we wanted to.
Hmm.
We are providing a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk along Union Street. We're providing an improvement there for a crosswalk over to the high school side. We're providing a flashing yellow beacon for safe passage. You know, there is no, from a traffic and peer, from a traffic standpoint, there's no need to eliminate the ledge off the side of the, you know, on the Union, on the Waverly Street side in order to, for site distance or for safety. So there's no, you know, engineering reason why that ledge face needs to be removed. And we just think it's a real significant burden on the project that's not really serving any, any immediate need. You know, our entire, you know, the entire kind of thesis when we designed the site was to try and minimize the amount of earthwork and the need for retaining walls around the site, which is how the project was originally submitted and approved by Mass Housing. And, you know, that, that design would have required blasting and a lot of removal of vegetation all along the entire perimeter of the site. We took a very different approach to try and eliminate that. And it's, you know, I understand the desire for a sidewalk there, but it sort of goes contrary to, you know, the entire design that we've put forth, you know, which focuses on minimizing and eliminating all of the site work that would be needed, you know, compared to the original plan that was put forth.
All right. I yield the floor to my other colleagues. I'm still confused on it, but I want to know how Stuart and Ryan feel and Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Let me say how I'm approaching this. You know, the idea of having the ledge removed to make it easier to put a sidewalk in is appealing to me. However, I'm looking at it as a practical matter, that if we were to put that condition in the hearing decision and the applicant appeals to the housing agency, what is the likelihood that we would be successful in having that condition upheld? The applicant submitted a report, a couple pages long, I believe, from its engineer discussing the length of the ledge, what would be required to remove it and the estimated cost for that. And we don't have any evidence to contradict that. And I would anticipate that based upon that, the housing agency would strike that condition. And that's how I'm approaching it, as perhaps a more practical legal matter as opposed to what I think would be, would be best or ideal for the town to go forward if the applicant would agree to do it. And they have been consistent in their opposition to it. Stu, your thoughts?
Well, just from a procedural point of view, if we had done, if we do that, wouldn't the housing board have to verify the numbers that the developer is, had proposed and see if they're viable?
Counsel, can you reply to that?
Well, not necessarily, and I don't want to go into, you know, hypothetical litigation strategy here, but we have the burden to show that that condition is consistent with local needs in the first place before the applicant has to show that it would render the project uneconomic. And so based on the record we have here today, you need, this board would have to make a finding that that condition is, is required for this project and does not override the presumption that, you know, affordable housing is needed and that there's a public safety or other, you know, component of the motivation for this condition, you know, that overrides, you know, the presumption for, you know, local needs for affordable housing. And that has to be just based on this record. And so that's the consideration that the Housing Appeals Committee would take up if this were to be appealed. We would have to defend that condition on that basis alone before the developer had to then come back and say, well, if it's a valid condition, then it renders the project uneconomic. And then we have that argument. So we would have that first burden.
But no one, no one is arguing that we, we need affordable housing, but as Brian just said, once you have a project, you're going to have people in the project, and we just calculated, someone threw out a number of three-hundred people. And if you get three-hundred people confined to an area, they're going to wander. And what we're looking at is public safety here. We're going to have potential for, you know, accidents. And if that's not strong enough for the housing authority, then let them share the burden.
If I may, I mean, there is no sidewalk there currently, so if we blast...
There's no project there.
Correct. There's no side, but if we blast, if I'm understanding the condition correctly, it's to prepare that side of the site for a potential sidewalk in the future. So even if we comply with that condition and, as you say, people want to walk and wander, there's no place for them to walk and wander currently there. So there's, you know, eliminating the ledge isn't all of a sudden creating a sidewalk for people to go and walk along Waverly Street.
So are you saying that the town should really be proposing, if you clear the way, then they'll follow through with building sidewalks?
I'm just simply suggesting that eliminating the ledge from that location doesn't address, doesn't change the fact that people, you know, there's no, we're making a condition potentially worse by encouraging people to walk along an area that they shouldn't be walking because there's no public safety improvements along that area.
Brian and Stu, do you wish to have that condition left in the draft decision or in the final decision?
Clarify which, which proposal? The blasting or the clearing for potential sidewalks?
We're dealing with paragraph number twenty-five, sidewalk...
Ledge removal, earthwork.
Ledge removal, earthwork and other improvements as necessary along the project's Waverly Street frontage to accommodate a potential sidewalk should the town...
They got cut off.
They got cut off.
Obviously, should the town choose to build a sidewalk project.
Yep.
Well, we have to know what the town is prepared to do in the, in the future.
Well, the evidence is closed for the hearing, so we're not able to obtain any additional information from the town on that nor the developer on that, so we have to deal with what we have. And the question is...
Well, I think we've answered, we've answered the question then.
Well, I don't quite understand what the answer is going to be. Do you want that provision in or not?
Well, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think we can either. So I tried.
No, I, Brian, your points have been very well taken, and I think, you know, the, the nature of the status of the, the evidence doesn't, I think, really support that, that condition. So I would, I would vote to strike it. Moving on to number twenty-nine. That's been, I guess, stricken by Mr. Lopez, if I have the name correct. I'm learning.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready.
By all means, Counsel, why don't you go first on this?
So the applicant is proposing to strike that, and the comment was that it's not a subdivision plan, and so there's no endorsement necessary. So this is a standard condition that we typically have in these, and it's, it's not meant to reference a subdivision plan, which is where the word endorsement comes from usually. And it's really just a process for the board to administratively approve, not at a public hearing, no, you know, just an administrative level. you know, just an administrative level, that the final site plans are consistent with the decision that it approved. It's to make sure that the board gets a last chance to see the final site plans that are the product of all the work the board just undertook. So my suggestion would be to replace the word endorsed with just administratively approved, and there's a definition earlier in the decision of what administratively approved means. Applicants, in my experience, don't want another public hearing, they don't want post permitting conditions that spring up unexpectedly. And so that's not what this is meant to accomplish. This is meant to just make sure that that final site plan set makes its way back to this board so that this board can see it's consistent with the decision you rendered. That's all.
That makes sense to me. Mr. Lopez, your thoughts on that?
That that's fine with us. I think I think also we felt it might have already been captured within the provisions regarding the board's review and approval of the final site plans. So we thought it might have been a little bit redundant. We don't have a problem conceptually with what the board is trying to do. So however, it's best to capture that.
Okay. Brian and Stu, you okay with that change as enunciated by counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to page 13. Nothing underlined. Any comments or questions on that? Page 14, nothing underlined. Any questions or comments on that? Page 15, nothing underlined or commented upon. Any questions? Same with page 16, nothing underlined or commented upon. Page 17, paragraph 51. I'm not sure who.
I think that's, that was me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And it was just that there were, so this is for local preference. And I think there was just a category that had been inadvertently omitted from the first draft. So local preference means that for the initial lottery, certain certain groups get a preferential chance to to occupy these units. And so that group is defined as residents of Ashland, parents or legal guardians of children attending Ashland Public Schools, municipal employees of the town of Ashland, and teachers employed by the school district serving the town of Ashland. And I added, and employees of a business located in Ashland. That category hadn't been in there before. So this this process and program has to be approved, you know, by the state and is implemented by the state. And so we just want to sort of define what we wish to see included when we when we seek that approval.
Mr. Lopez, any problems with that?
No.
Any questions about that? Stu or Brian?
No.
No.
Okay. Moving on to page 18. Paragraph 33 is in red and underlined, so did that come from you, counsel, or what's that all about?
I don't believe so. I think we had had some earlier language in the prior drafts, and it just got updated to include this. So you'll see there's no comments on either side of it. This is just a substitution of language. I believe that's correct. That's where we landed on that.
Mr. Lopez, I'll set with that?
Yes.
Any questions, Stu or Brian?
No.
Moving on to page 19. Paragraph 58. It looks like Mr. Lopez has some questions and concerns about about that.
Hi, Mr. Chair, this was just to try and, you know, we're going to be providing there's going to be a significant amount of coordination that's already provided for within the document, and the peer viewer for the board is going to be involved. We're going to have an initial meeting at the site and then certainly any any changes that would be brought to the attention of the building inspector and the board in this substantive changes. This was really just intended to try and put a little bit of a a box, if you will, or or just try and limit the amount of reporting to something that we, you know, feel is still very reasonable, which is quarterly reports. So I don't think there's anything here that's we couldn't live with if the board wanted to maintain this language, but I don't know that the board wants to be getting a monthly report either on, you know, the status of construction if there's nothing that the building inspector is not bringing to the attention of the board.
Counsel, your thoughts?
Yeah, so this is a sort of tried and true condition that I usually have in here, and I leave it to the peer reviewer to determine generally, you know, how much or how little is required. The the real issue here is that we just don't have, you know, the bandwidth on staff at Town Hall. We don't have people with the expertise, we don't have people with the time to perform this function, to basically be a liaison for us and go out there and communicate with you and your team and report back and go out to the site. And so this is to sort of close that gap and have someone that essentially becomes a new member of our staff who can do this on an ad hoc base and a basis as they see fit. And so, you know, I I want to leave it as broad as possible because, you know, the the selected peer review, you know, engineering consultant is going to know what's required. And that's going to be based on communication with the developer and industry standards and, you know, if something particularly important is happening, they'll be out there more. If if it's less important, they'll be out there less. So I just like to leave it, you know, kind of as written. I've never had a problem with it in practice before. We certainly need someone to perform this function because as far as I know, there's no one at Town Hall who can do this. And for a project of this scale, you know, we just don't have the ability to do it in-house.
I have a question.
Yes, Stu.
I can't remember, but was this in the 1060 Main Street?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Well, I think the two documents should be consistent.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it it makes sense to have the peer review and to have it formalized. Now, it looks like paragraph 59 is also part of that, and it looks like one of the sentences has been stricken. So about the applicant paying for all third-party inspections of project infrastructure.
And and we thought this was with respect to, let me just make sure I read this correctly. Third-party inspections of project. I thought this read off-site. Anything that was off-site, which there really isn't any. We're okay with this.
Okay.
And just for clarification, yeah, it isn't intended to be off-site. It's 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 an adjunct of 58.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we keep 58 and 59 both in. That's okay with everybody? Moving on to page 20, nothing underlined. Anybody have any questions of concerns about that?
Mr. Chairman, could we go back again to the peer reviewers? What if, what if they're informed that they have this responsibility and they object?
May I ask for a clarification, please? Do you mean if the peer reviewer says that I'm not going to do this or I object? Are you referring?
I I mean, if the peer reviewer says, if if the peer reviewer says, well, if you want to compensate me for doing this function, I'll do it. But if you don't compensate me, I might not do it. I I don't know. I'm I'm just thinking.
They are going to be compensated. And so this is no different than the peer review support that we've had during the public hearing process. It's just going to continue on with respect to the post permitting process so that we have a level of expertise and and, you know, for lack of a better term, boots on the ground, because we don't otherwise have that.
Okay, I I didn't realize that this has been understood by the peer reviewers in a contractual way that this might be a function that they have to perform.
Absolutely. And just like, you know, the initial onboarding of a peer reviewer, there has to be a scope of services and we, you know, we're going to supply that to the developer. And, you know, if there's a, you know, an engineering firm who doesn't have the bandwidth or for whatever reason, doesn't want to, you know, be the selected person, well, then they're going to withdraw and say, we're not going to do it, find somebody else. And it doesn't have to be the peer reviewers that we worked with during the public hearing. We could, you know, if there was a reason to, we could, you know, pivot and work with a new group. It's just usually consistency is, you know, much more efficient, right? So we we would probably want to work with the same group because they're familiar with the project already.
Thank you for clarifying.
Certainly.
Okay, moving on again to page 20, nothing underlined or any questions or concerns? If not, page 21. Just the attachments which will be attached to the final decision when it is signed. And on 22, again, just after the decision is signed. Moving on to the exhibit of waivers. Can we bring that up on the screen to make sure everybody has the the correct waivers we're dealing with? That doesn't look like what I'm looking at.
It looks like mine. It's just blue and purple instead of blue.
Because mine is blue, not red.
Yeah, it's just a different, it's the same thing, it's just a different color for some reason.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why mine's blue and.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were all working off of the same same waiver page.
Yes, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That one just looks much redder than that looks. Okay. Everybody got the same waiver page that we're working with here on the screen?
Yeah, but excuse me, Jasmine, could you make it a little bit larger? Yeah, yeah, thank you. Getting late.
You know, counsel, what what are we to do with with this, the language that is stricken out on the on the first full paragraph and then also on the fourth paragraph?
So I I left it in there just so you could see, you know, the changes. One of the reasons, and I discussed this with the applicant's representative, is some of this information, the language in here is redundant of language that's already in the comprehensive permit. And the danger in saying something twice is if you say it a slightly different way, it's presumed that maybe you meant something different. And so this is really for consistency. So this language appears in the comprehensive permit itself and and the conditions that are in the comprehensive permit already. And so that, I think, is just streamlining, you know, some of the language here. So for the first page, unless the board has any questions, concerns or comments, you know, I don't think we need to necessarily dwell on that one. The real action is in the table itself. Just like we discussed a little bit ago with respect to the other project, I added a fourth column, and that's the zoning board's decision. And I had mentioned to you earlier.
Jasmine, can you move the screen till we get to page two? So people, there we go. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very much.
And so the applicant had struck, you know, everything in this column, and we had a conversation about that recently. And or most everything. And my intent in having this column here was to be very specific about what the board's decision was on each one of these waivers. And in some cases, that's important because you're granting a waiver, but you're granting the waiver subject to certain conditions. And we'll see those in a second. But in other cases, it's less important. So on the first one, for example, one solution we discussed and sort of agreed to between each other was just to add a sentence that said, you know, the waiver is granted subject to compliance with the comprehensive permit and the terms and conditions set forth therein. So it just refers back to all the conditions we just went over, which includes, you know, compliance with the the site plan and so on and so forth.
Now, there's paragraphs after that that appear to be in blue with lines through them. Those are not agreed upon?
So the applicant struck those or proposed striking those. And let me just explain on the first one. So that doesn't appear in every in every situation, but it appears in this one. And so this was a request for a waiver with respect to the dimensions of the sign. Monument signs not to be greater than three feet tall and 12 square feet. And so what I had put in there was additionally signage monument plan, including signs and monuments, if any, to be used during the marketing of the project or any component thereof, and permanent signage monuments, if any, shall be submitted to the board for its administrative approval. And so there's a difference between what we have now and what we're going to have when the plan is final. And everything's been, you know, sort of sorted out at the end of this process. And so the reason I had included that language is, you know, wouldn't the board appreciate seeing and getting a chance to discuss with the applicant what the final package looks like? So you have preliminary, you know, site plans and, you know, other kinds of plans included in that plan set. But the reason I usually add that is so that you get to see what the final product looks like at the end of the process as well. And so and obviously, this is reserved so you could ask the applicant what their position is on it.
Okay, but while we're dealing with that, why don't we ask Mr. Lopez what his position on that is?
Yeah, I think really with respect to many of these, the, we're just trying to make sure that we have consistency with what the decision document says. So, for example, the decision document says that we have, and there's a very extensive section that says we've got to provide final site plans. So there's an initial set of plans, which are the plans that we've submitted currently, that the board has reviewed. Those have been peer reviewed. And those are defined as the plans. And then between now and the time that we pull a building permit, we're going to have further detail designed, all of the things that need to be designed in much more detail than they're currently at today. And so when we submit that set of plans to the building inspector for a building permit, that would include all of this information. So from our, the way we interpret the document is that this is already included and required as part of the decision via the process that's required for us to submit what's what's defined as the final site plans. So we're just trying to eliminate ambiguity between, you know, language that could be required here and language that could be required in the decision document. And that's really the intent of this.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, just as I mentioned earlier, one of the efforts here was just to avoid inconsistencies. And like I said, if if you say something twice and you say it differently the second time, it can create some confusion, unanticipated confusion in the future, where if the language is slightly different, the developer has to make a choice, well, which one do I comply with? And so to avoid that, what we were, what we discussed and what I would suggest is we say granted, subject to compliance with the comprehensive permit and the terms and conditions thereof. And then we're just referring back to the original condition in the in the permit itself.
And just leave it at that?
Because it it is already in there. It's just in there in a different form. And so that addresses my concern, and I believe it addresses. And so that addresses my concern and I believe it addresses the applicant's concern as well.
So the waiver would be, would be, if we granted it, would be just the language for the first four lines? Is that... So having difficulty understanding quite what all this other language, the lines crossed through it is supposed to be, um, it would seem to be duplicative and you've said the idea is not to duplicate it because if there's any inconsistency, that can create a problem. So if we strike that, then there's no duplicate, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Right, I will substitute everything in that fourth column with a new sentence that says granted, subject to compliance with the comprehensive permit and the terms and conditions therein.
Okay.
So that will replace all this hashed out language.
Okay, good, thank you for clarifying. Brian and Stu, um, any questions about that?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
And, and just for what it's worth, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, the applicant asked if I would be providing an updated draft for tonight. And I said no because, uh, we just had this conversation the other day and I didn't think we had time to put yet another document in front of you that you'd be able to look at in time for tonight. So this is something we could have clarified before tonight so it'd be a little bit easier to read, but we just didn't have the opportunity, or I didn't have the opportunity.
Okay. Now, going forward, um, there are a number of sections that are all in yellow with lines through them. The lines through them just mean that it's for us for decision?
Um, so the, the lot, so everything down to 9.6, um, which is, I don't know what page that is on, we're getting there. It's design plan review.
Yep.
So everything up to that point will be replaced with the sentence that I just read to you. Granted, subject to compliance with the comprehensive permit and terms and conditions set forth therein. Um, section 9.6, design plan review is the first place where it's going to be, or I suggest it being a little different because for design plan review, you'll recall that we have a separate exhibit that spells out what we've agreed to with respect to design plan review.
Mm-hmm.
And so rather than just saying granted, subject to the comprehensive permit, it's going to say granted, subject to the attached conditions in exhibit one. And exhibit one is here.
Okay.
And exhibit one says design review notes and there are 10 requirements. Um, and so that's a unique situation where, um, the board presumably would grant the waiver as it did in its, its, uh, prior vote, but that grant is conditional upon compliance with exhibit one, which is attached. So that one's unique.
Okay, um, Brian and Stu, you all set with that?
I have no problem with that procedure.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, Mr. Chairman, you'll see that the last one with respect to the wetlands by law? Oh, second, second to last one, excuse me. Chapter 280, wetlands protection, that's, um...
Why don't we back up a minute to the one just before that about waivers from stormwater management? They're all, three are categories are highlighted in yellow. Uh, so what are we, what are we doing there?
The, the reason why those are highlighted in yellow is because prior to, um, tonight, we had had a conversation and I wanted to bring those to the board's attention because as you'll recall, we had a whole conversation with the applicant about, um, some of the nuances of, of those, and so that's why they were highlighted. Um, those, those were not just sort of the generic waivers that you see in, in every 40B. Those were specific waivers and we had a specific conversation around them. So the highlight really doesn't mean anything now, um, because we, we reached a resolution on those. Um, and so the final, uh, form, um, will refer back to the comprehensive permit and I don't remember the specific number, but we, we pulled in those requirements into the comprehensive permit. So those conditions are now listed as conditions of the, the permit itself.
Okay. Um, Brian and Stu, you all set with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving down then to chapter 280, wetlands. Brian, could you, Orion, Brian? Counsel, could you lead us through that, please? I'm getting punchy here.
So, um, again, this was a specific conversation that resulted in some fine tuning of how the waiver would be granted and subject to which conditions. So all those conditions appear in exhibit two. Um, and so this one again is very, uh, is a little bit different. So it's, it's granted, you know, subject to compliance with exhibit two. And then exhibit two itself spells all that out. And that's the, the wetlands protection by law conditions, which, um, you know, as the board knows and as we've discussed before, we communicated with the Conservation Commission and its agent, um, concerning what that commission might do, um, with respect to a request like this. And what we learned was that they have very specific, um, guardrails that they impose when someone asks for such a waiver. And so because the zoning board stands in the Conservation Commission's shoes with respect to the wetlands by law, we get, this board gets to impose those guardrails. And so that's what exhibit two is.
Okay. Brian and Stu, any questions about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure I fully understand that one. And, uh, Jasmine, I was wondering if you could slide that to the left a little bit so we could see the comments, yeah, thank you. Okay. So, so this gives the, no, this gives the, the, um, Conservation Commission the power again? I, I'm...
No, it doesn't. So the, the procedure, so normally the procedural requirements, um, outside of a 40B would require that the developer file an application with the Conservation Commission, but they don't do that in a comprehensive permit under 40B.
Right, okay.
This board serves in that role. And so what we've done, uh, to sort of, um, account for that is to communicate with the Conservation Commission and its agent and ask them, "Well, what would you do if you were us?" Um, and, and this application were in front of you right now. And the answer to that question was, "Well, we would impose certain mitigation." And I asked for, you know, draft conditions as to what that might look like and we've pulled that into your decision. So since this board, uh, since it's not going to go to the Conservation Commission under the bylaw, it will under the state act, they're there right now, um, but it's not going there under the bylaw, that means this board is acting as the Conservation Commission and, and reviewing under the bylaw. And so that's why we get, you know, that mitigation.
So you're cloning what the Conservation Commission would have done?
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did that satisfy everybody?
Yes.
Okay, and that brings us, I think, to the end?
I think so.
Okay. Now, procedurally, we need a, we're going to need a vote on the decision and also a vote on the waivers. I'm not comfortable voting on the waivers in the present condition. I want to see the final...
Yes.
Process that I, the final document that I'm going to vote on. If that's all right with you, Stu, and you, Brian. Um, I think we need the document with no yellow highlights, no lines through them, whatever. Uh, and also the changes that we had talked about on the hearing also, I think, need to be finalized in form before we, um, before we vote.
I'm all with me.
On that, okay.
Yeah.
Our next, yes?
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair, I just, I, I just have, um, two comments, maybe three. Um, there were a couple of conditions that, uh, were incorporated into the 1060 Main Street project with respect to, uh, the building commissioner's ability to review minor changes. And I think this might sound self-serving, uh, but I think it actually benefits the town and the building inspector. And I think, uh, uh, Stu may have mentioned it earlier, to have a consistent process for the building commissioner with respect to these 40B projects. And so I would ask, uh, that I could provide maybe, that we incorporate essentially the same condition, uh, for the 1060 Main Street project with respect to the process for the building inspector's ability to review minor modifications. And I would leave it to Town Council to draft that if he thinks it's appropriate. It's not something that...
Counsel, what do you think? I mean, it strikes me that the 10 to 60 Main Street project is a much more complicated project than this is, which may...
Well, if I may just give a very simple example of what practically happens in the field. Um, so right now, the plans say that the stormwater, uh, you know, basin needs to go down two feet. And you get there and you, you know, you dig and, you know, it need to go down three feet. Uh, the building inspector is reviewing it, you know, uh, these are, you know, minor changes, maybe you shift over something a foot. Uh, those kinds of things happen all the time in the field and I don't know if... Uh, so that's the kind of changes that, you know, happen routinely that I don't think raise, you know, don't change and it don't rise to the level of a substantial change. So I don't want to overcomplicate the request.
Counsel, your thoughts?
Um, so two things. Um, one is, it, this is really procedural and not substantive. It doesn't matter how big or small the project is, it's just how we manage it. Um, and two, these things probably happen every day, whether they're in the decision or not, because the building commissioner and other people are going to be on the site and, you know, they're going to have a conversation, right? And the plan's going to get pulled out and someone's going to say, "Uh, I don't think that requires, uh, an application to the CBA." You know, it's too minor. And so I don't think it's actually going to change your oversight, your jurisdiction, your ability to supervise. It's, it's just more reflective of kind of the practice. Um, and so we did do it for the other decision. Um, that applicant, applicant had requested we make that tweak. Um, and I don't really have an objection to it. Either way, it, it's going to work, it's just whether or not there's a recognized process um, for what people are kind of doing already.
So that's not something that you normally put in your, in your decisions? It was in the 1060 Main because the applicant requested it?
It, yes, and that's, that's not to say without that language, it's like forbidden. Um, because remember, you'll recall that I described three tiers?
Mm-hmm.
There, there was this minor, then there was insubstantial, and there's substantial. The minor one, which is akin to like a field change, if you will, um, that's not recognized in the regulations.
Mm-hmm.
That's just recognized in the practice because it happens every day sometimes, some, you know, there are tolerances in all of these things, right? And so you go out and you measure the board and it's, it's off, you know, 1/32 of an inch. You know, you don't necessarily come back to the board for that, so, um, I don't have an objection to it because it's, it's just more reflective of kind of what the practice is in construction out in the field anyway.
Okay. Brian and Stu, your thoughts about having that provision added in or going without it like counsel drafted it?
I would like to have it in.
Yeah, I like it in.
Okay. Counsel, can you...
Yes, understood.
...draft it into, okay, very good.
And the only other thing is I might, um, provide to counsel a few other minor edits really intended to eliminate, uh, situation where there could be a subsequent change to a DEP regulation, for example, that we are required to comply with because it's a state, you know, uh, regulation. And if we comply with that, it puts us immediately in violation of the comprehensive permit because maybe, uh, you know, there's a subsequent change to a DP, DEP regulation. So it's really more, um, uh, that kind of, um, thing that we're just trying to avoid so that we're not in violation of anything and we have the ability to, and any changes that we are required to make in order to comply with a state permit, federal permit, we can do so without running a file of the comprehensive permit.
In deliberations, are we allowed to receive additional information from the applicant?
It's, it's not substantive, it's not evidence in the case. He's suggesting, just proposing some language for a condition. Um, I, may I?
Yes, please.
Uh, I, I look forward to looking at that.
Okay.
I, I may have some concerns about it and I don't want to hide the ball because, um, there's no way of knowing what kind of project changes would be precipitated by a regulatory change. Um, I mean, it could be something very minor that we don't care about or it could be, you know, it could require some new standard for stormwater management that we've never even heard of, which could be something substantial, I don't know. Um, and so 40B, the regulations have a process, we just discussed it. In substantial modifications, substantial modifications. And so I don't mind if there's a recognition that certain changes in the future might require, um, them to file something before this board in order to reconcile the comprehensive permit with this new obligation that they're under. But I think there should be a process, then nothing should happen automatically. Um, and so that would probably be my comment back to them that if, uh, that eventuality occurs, then they just file an application with this board and we'll deal with it. Um, I, I don't want anything to happen without, um, you know, this board or the appropriate jurisdiction getting a chance to, to look at it and determine whether or not, it's consequential for the people you represent. I mean, it, who knows?
Makes sense.
That's all.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, next is determining the timeframe in which we have to vote on the hearing decision and the waivers. You've been kind enough to extend our time to December 24th. Our next meeting is scheduled to be December 23rd. Assuming we vote in favor of the hearing decision and the waivers, there is no way we're going to get that decision signed by all three members and filed with the town clerk. Because the following day is the day before Christmas. Um, we're not sure whether the town hall is going to be open on that day. Or if it is, people are going to probably go by noon time. So we have, I think, two ways we could handle it. We could, if you saw fit to, grant a further extension of time to, uh, for deliberation so that we would presumably vote on the 23rd, but the documents wouldn't have to be signed and filed with the town clerk until that extended period. Or we've sort of gone through, counsel has gone through his schedule and my, I've gone through my schedule to see is there a date where we could move this up so that it would be before December 23rd, which would give us a couple of days perhaps to sign and file. The difficulty is we have Town Council who fortunately has many clients and apparently is occupied every night the week before the 23rd. So we're talking about Monday, the 22nd. Frankly, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to move it up one day uh, because that would then mean we would have to get it fully signed and filed by the 23rd. And I know I'm here in person and could sign it that night. Um, Brian oftentimes is here in person and he could sign it. And Stu regularly can come to town hall to sign something, which presumably I haven't asked him as yet. But Stu, would you be available to come in on the morning of the 23rd to sign?
I absolutely will.
Okay, then, I guess... Then, I guess, my question is, what would you prefer?
That would be our preference, Christmas comes early. If we can do it on the 22nd, if that could be accommodated.
Maybe I can leave a little something extra under the tree. Okay. Well, we, I know, we don't need a motion to continue because we're in deliberation.
And, and I should say, Mr. Chair, that if all else fails and we need to provide a little bit more time, it would be our preference not to, but certainly would.
Well, let me say this, Counsel, December 20, Monday, December 22nd at 7:00 PM would work for you?
I can make that work, Mr. Chairman.
Brian, can that work for you?
Yes.
And Stu, can that work for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and presumably it would be a very quick meeting, because we would review the draft decision that's been redrafted again with what we've talked about tonight.
That's right.
The waiver section will be cleaned up, and we'd be ready to look at it, have any discussion we want to have, and then conduct a vote. So, we're gonna be on for December 22nd at 7:00 PM. There will be an agenda posted online and at the town clerk's office. You're on notice that this next hearing is going to be December 22nd. And we will still have a, a regular hearing on, the next day, on December 23rd, where we have 55 West Union. And I believe that's all we're going to have on that night. And there's a possibility that that will be, depending upon what Ms. Sweet wants to do. Very good, I think we are done with this, with this section of deliberation.
Thank you.
We all set, Counsel?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
And again, my apologies, I'm the last name. Before this process is done, there's a very good chance that I will get your name right. I've been called far worse. All right, thank, thank you, good night.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is meeting minutes for our November 18th and November 25th meeting. Melissa sent these out to us last week. Jasmine, with respect to the minutes for November 18th, did you receive any proposed changes or comments from any board members?
I have not.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about them before we entertain a motion to approve?
Nope.
Okay. Someone wished to make a motion to approve the November 18th, 2025 minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John T. Fethen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent, now moving on to the minutes for November 25th, 2025. And Jasmine, did you receive any comments or proposed changes from anybody?
I did not.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or proposed changes in the minutes? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the November 25th, 2025 minutes as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Excellent, aye, John T. Fethen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Moving on to the next item, number six, staff updates and administrative matters. We had received talent bank forms from two gentlemen who had expressed an interest in sitting on the ZBA. And the process is to invite them to a meeting. I invited each of them to attend tonight's meeting, and they replied that they would. However, there is nobody here in the hearing room, and I don't see anybody online. So, for whatever reason, I'm assuming there is no one here. But I will call out, is anybody that had submitted a talent bank form for the ZBA present? Hearing, nothing, we will close that. Jasmine, any other staff, staff updates?
Not tonight.
Okay. Then a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John T. Fethen, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you all, everybody, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, whackup.
Good night.
Happy holidays, guys.